It's going to be brought to order. First order of business. So if the format seems a little different tonight, we're trying something new. Staff at the beginning of each application is going to give us the legal jargon and then kind of a down-to-earth, this is what they want to do, okay? To make it might be more clear to the viewing public. All right, so very first thing on the agenda for us is meeting minutes from July 20th. Anybody have any questions, deletions, additions?
I'm sorry, before we get into the minutes, we do open forum. I think we might have to make for open forum.
Okay, hang on a minute, boys. Open forum.
We do have an item for open forum, Mr. Chairman. Coming up on September 8th, there will be the Strategic Planning Retreat held at Kimball Farm, starting at 5:00 PM. It is a free event, but you do have to register. There is a way to register on the town website. There'll be four kind of primary presentations, if you will. One will be on the new center building at 51 Main Street. There'll be a presentation on the library expansion project. There'll be an introduction of the new community wellness coordinator and wellness initiatives. And there's one from the Clean Energy Sustainability Committee, talking about current initiatives and introducing the new sustainability coordinator. So again, it's September 8th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at Kimball Farm. There is food and ice cream provided, but you do need to register on the town website.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Let's go back to the meeting minutes. Did anybody have any concerns?
I did not.
We have moved to approve. So Jim moved to approve.
Second.
Second from Jay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, first item on the docket is 487 Groton Road.
So for this one, Mr. Chair, you can refer to the variance criteria side of your yellow card. The applicant here has had a couple iterations of their plans, but where we're looking at tonight is a standalone storage structure that would be within the side yard setback of both the easterly and southerly side. So it's kind of tucked into the corner, that corner of the property.
All right. Can we have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll move second.
Jim opened it. Jay seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the Board, Attorney Melissa Robbins from the law firm of Farrelan Robbins. I'm here tonight with Matt Waterman, our engineer from Lantech, as well as Dave Guthrie, who's manager of 47 Groton Road LLC. As Mr. Genowitz has pointed out, we're here tonight for a variance for a side yard setback for an accessory structure on the site. Currently, we can't see it on this plan, but there is a trailer on the site that we're using for storage. And my client also has some storage off-site in Littleton in a barn that he's about to move out of because he's donating that barn to the town of Littleton. So in order to keep storage inside and to allow for the removal of that trailer that we have on-site now and really get more of a permanent storage solution out here on site, we're seeking to have an accessory structure put into the rear of the property. You're right, there's been a couple reiterations here. We've been on your agenda for some time. Originally, we were trying to tuck this, the storage actually onto the building closer to the property that was the snowmobile shop and is now the chimney guys at 497 Groton Road. It actually seemed like the most reasonable solution in line with the structure. But once we designed it out, the fire department had commented that if we put that accessory structure onto the building, we'll have to sprinkle the entire building, not just the storage area, which is just infeasible for a building of this age and this type. So we had to seek a different solution, and that was to put the storage area in the rear, which is where you see it on this plan. It's marked proposed storage building 24 by 52. Did not change the relief we needed from this board either way, regardless if we put it there along 497 Groton Road or if we put it in the corner. We needed a variance for a side yard setback. We're here tonight for a side yard setback of 4.6 and 7.6 feet. Maybe asking why I'm asking for two sides, because that looks like a rear. We are actually a corner lot here. We have Carl Thompson on one side and Groton Road on the other, which means we have two fronts and two sides. So both of these areas in the back are two sides. We're 7.6 feet to the back, which abuts the El Paco business, and we're 4.6 feet to the new company of the chimney guys. I forget, I think that's... We do have some revised parking to talk about, but I'll let Matt talk about that in a couple moments. I just also would like to point out, could you just move to the next slide? That we are far away from the other structures as well. Hmm, is that the one? Could you actually go back up? I'm sorry, I think we must have... Yes, this one here. So you can tell we have lots of space between the abutting structures as well. We're 80 feet from that El Paco building at least. We're 171 feet and 180 feet from our closest residential abutters, and we're 66 feet from the structure at 497 Groton Road. This property does have a hardship owing to the soil shape and topography due to its shape. Also, given the parking location and layout, especially in the rear, there's nowhere to put an accessory structure for storage out here except against the property line. It wouldn't be an island in the middle of that back parking lot. The literal enforcement of this bylaw would be a hardship not only to my client, but I think quite frankly to the neighborhood, because the only other solution is outside storage or the maintenance of that trailer or a combination of both, which really isn't a good solution for my client or the neighborhood. This will have no impact to the abutters and actually allow all of this material to be safely screened inside in a facility. That's a permanent solution. That is also why this will not derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. One more thing I want to go through before I turn over to Matty in the parking. Staff had pointed out a couple comments. We also had a revised comment from fire that they were satisfied with this new layout and they had no further comments. We had a couple questions from staff, and then Sierra, we just go to that one with the screening?
I'm sorry, with what?
The screening. So the first one was about existing landscaping. It's the two pictures, like the photographs of the fence and the trees. So we do actually have substantial screening already on this property. There's some substantial growth trees on our property and the abutting property, and there's also an existing fence that goes around this entire area that screens all of this from view. The next question from staff, it's the next slide, Sierra, is what we would be storing in here? And really, you can see, it's just really light construction, wood and some small equipment, but absolutely nothing hazardous whatsoever. There was also a question as to why the shed was sized the way that it is, but that's just the typical construction size for material that size to build a shed of that size. So that's why we picked the size we did. There wasn't really a lot of science that went into it, except that's the standard material size. So that is why the size is the way that it is. The other question was related to parking, so we did have a couple parking configuration changes here. We have the existing parking, and then we've had to change a couple spots around to make sure that we conform to today's parking requirements, and so I'll let Matt talk about that.
Thank you. Matt Waterman, Lantech Consultants. Just quick, one more bit of information. The building is industrial office building. The footprint, there's a larger footprint that I think most of you are familiar with that faces Groton Road, that's... And then there's a small two-story wing that's to the southwest corner. The footprint is just over 10,000 square feet. The gross floor area is just under 12,000 square feet. The parking that's there today is eight, excuse me, 32 spaces. There's 18 out front, and there's 14 in the rear. When the building was built in 1984, there was a kind of an exterior loading dock. It was one of the big concrete four-foot that came out and had an L shape to it. That was removed at some point, I think in the mid, early 90s. The parking that, if we go back one space, but the parking that's laid out and designated today shows the 18 in the front and the 14 in the rear. And there's the loading dock that's been removed. Oh, can't go sideways. But you can see the loading dock. So with this addition, it's plus four spaces for the proposed garage, which is 24 by 52 or 1,248 square feet. We've added one space to the front of the building, and then we did, reconfigured the rear to add three spaces. The garage is mostly on the paved area down in this southeast corner. It does extend off the pavement by four to five feet. But then we were able to add spaces along the back of the building and configure the parking such that we got three additional spaces. We would also be updating the septic system with this. There's a, the septic is shown, and it conflicts with the garage or the new, the new storage. So we'd have to do an updated septic plan. I think it's an original septic, so it's probably 40 years old. So it's probably needs updating anyways. If the building ever gets sold, it would probably be something that would be coming down the pipeline anyways. I think if we move forward with the planning board, we obviously do site plan review, but we would consider either waiving a couple spaces. Under their bylaw, they have the authority to potentially waive parking spaces, so that's something that we would consider to minimize some of this redevelopment.
Matt, can you just tell us why you can't move that building close to the septic system?
Going towards the, to the north and west, further away from...
Further away from the back lot line, yes.
Back lot line. We were trying to keep that area open, it won't point over there, for access when you come in with the building and just for these parking spaces and turnaround and where these car paths will sweep out and exit. So the goal was to keep that garage in line with those parking spaces that are on that southeast property line with the former Philbrook Motorsports. So ultimately, that was our goal, was to keep as much of that parking area open for accessibility, not only emergency vehicles, but for the turning radiuses of the cars.
Okay. And isn't there some kind of a rule, you're going to be so many feet from a septic system?
Correct. 10 feet to a slab. So this, I think that's just over 10 feet being shown.
Okay. Thank you.
What kind of traffic is in there for that number of spaces? What's the purpose of the...
Right now? I can...
That's all, it seems like...
It's pretty, I mean, I know there's been a couple uses. At one point, there was a gymnastics that you'd see a wave of cars with pickup and drop off, but I haven't seen that. For the most part, the parking lot's underutilized, and I know the rear parking, I think there's probably five or six cars at any time, and that's at most, from what I've seen.
That was my question, why the 17 if it could be different?
That's in compliance. So we have to be in compliance with the parking standards, and that meets compliance. So if we were to full, if we actually had full tenancy here and the end building was the Ta-da Dance Studio or daycare as was previously there, these spots would be full. And I think any of you that recall that dance studio being open, all these spaces would be full and they'd be parked on the grass down Carl Thompson. So it has happened in the past when these are at full occupancy, just right now they're not. So especially in the back, they're not hardly used.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
No.
What type of fence is there now?
It's a, you can see, yeah, it's a chain link. It's black, and it runs the back and the side of the property. Sierra, will you go back down to that plan? Somehow, there's a lot of, actually a really substantial...
The photo where...
Yeah, that's the one. You can see it on the top and the bottom, the fence. So it's actually a pretty substantial fence. It's doing a great job screening, and we have a lot of growth there. Some of that undergrowth will be cleaned out when we go back through to do the pavement, but the large mature trees, especially those that aren't on our property, will stay. So it's actually a pretty decent buffer there.
Is the fence yours or is it for the chimney guys?
The fence is our, it runs our properties, because it runs to El Paco, from the El Paco back and then to down 497.
Correct.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor of this? Anybody in the audience to speak opposing this? I guess there's none. Does the record reflect that? So are there any conditions that you want to talk about?
Maintain the fence if any growth gets cut down while you're digging and building, that's all?
Absolutely.
I can't see anything jumps over me, because it's an IA industrial zone. It's, everything over there is the same. It's not a neighborhood.
It didn't seem like, doesn't appear there's any storage issues or any that's controversial or...
No, I mean, it's pretty much straightforward. Building materials and ladders and staging and...
Yeah, the truck, the trailer, is that still there?
The trailer's still there, yeah. And you can use the trailer as long-term, like a pod, like a long-term storage solution. It's just not a very nice solution.
That's going, what's...
That's leaving, yeah. That'll be leaving the property. So this will be a permanent solution, so all of that can leave, absolutely. And you can make that a condition of approval as well.
If we were getting a building donated to us, we'd probably be a lot better about it.
Noted.
And that was a trade for 57 house lots. We won't...
All right. So can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Jim made the motion. Jay seconded it. And now we need a motion for...
Is that on the close?
Speak up, Sierra.
Did you vote on the close?
We had a motion in a second.
All those in favor? Aye. There you go.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we're looking for a variance to construct a storage building with an easterly side yard setback of 4.6 feet and a southerly side yard setback of 7.6, whereas 15 feet is required. So we have that motion.
So move.
Jim made the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Scott Fitzgerald. So Dan, you're going to have to sit on this.
Okay.
Jay?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Scott Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will also vote in affirmative.
Thank you very much.
We don't need to tell you all the rules and regulations.
No, thank you very much.
Do you know them?
By the way, kudos on this one to, I have a lot of these, but to the staff. Great staff report, really. Detailed and thorough.
Okay. The next order of business is 28 Brookside. And Dave, can you sit on this for me?
Sure.
Okay. Joe?
So for this petition, we're sticking with variances on side yard setbacks. At the last hearing, it was just over six feet, at 6.3 feet the applicant was asking for. There's been some modifications to the plan. Now it's just a little under 10 feet at 9.8 feet?
Uh huh.
Because, who would have any questions?
I thought we were going to get some feedback or indication that these folks were going to talk to the neighbors and see if they, everything was copacetic.
We have spoken with our neighbor who's here. We met with him, showed him our revised plan, how we tried to do the 10 feet as much as possible, take out the windows on that side of the house. So yes, we've discussed and we've talked and we feel...
The magic words are, we're in agreement.
We're in a good place, so...
City Jew, is it?
Sorry?
The magic words are, they are agreeable to what it is we'd like to do and comfortable.
I have some questions.
So come up to the microphone, give us your name, please.
Yeah, but of the 30 Brookside Road. The, like, last thing what I brought up was, that's the same spot where I would like to put an addition to for a room. And would be looking for the similar kind of variance, given the way the property lines are. So we would be, when done, looking at two structures which will be 20 feet apart with no screening, nothing between them. I'm like, it still seems less to me. Yes, Sean and Rabia did show me the revised plan, which are better than the last one. But this was pretty much like, that's the least they can do. They can't go anywhere further. So my concern is 20 feet still seems less to me between the two. I'm perceiving as a 20 feet, because I know I'm going to be putting a structure as well. So what is, two things come from there. One, the big headline is 20 feet is less. Second, if I come up with the same proposal of putting the thing, what is the chances that I'll be said a no to, once they get there?
Can't answer that.
Exactly. So that's a bigger concern for me.
Well, it's, that's like asking me if it's going to snow tomorrow. I don't know.
I can't expect that answer, so...
Right.
So because of that reason, I mean, like, yeah, I feel this is closer. I'm, I'm like, I've not seen any house in the neighborhood which will be like that close once the two, you know, things are there. And then there's, we did talk about, a little bit about the retaining wall, what we do with it, once that is gone. Because right now, ours house sits a little bit up than 28 Brookside. Once that is gone, what do we do with it? That's, I do not have a concrete plan or written-down plan right now for that either. But it all boils down to the, and it's, the thing is, it's not something in the back. It's like the two structures are going to be next to each other. They're going to be exactly aligning to each other. Yes, they do not have a window, which is nice, because that's how we had it originally. They're being moved into 30 Brookside, so... Yeah, it's going to be close.
So as to, as to the points that you've brought up, you know, one, we can't speak to whether you're going to get a variance or not. We can't speak to whether you're even going to add on to the house or not. You say you are, but life changes.
Yes.
So we're taking this on the merits of what they've proposed to us.
Right.
And I think they've done a pretty good job at being reasonable. They've got some space in there. So I don't have a problem with it.
As I said, I mean, like, that's what we spoke about also, like, the plan, what they have done is the best they could do at this point. I'm like, shrinking it further down wasn't making sense and stuff like that. But obviously, it's not in the papers, you can't see it, but putting of the structure is definitely going to happen on my end too. If there's anything you have a recommendation for me to speed up that process and get that going first, I can start working on that. I've not started working on it yet. I started speculating some ideas, what do we want for it? Met with a contractor, but not something with a site survey and get the drawings going. But if that is something which is right in front of you and will help, I can start working on that. But that's, in my head, that's happening, obviously. We can't consider that, or it's not in front of you. But yeah. So that's one, one way I'm, what I'm trying to say is, keep that in mind, that the end result would be if we have two structures which are 20 feet apart. And the sole reason for that being rejected to me is because this was put in, is, would not be fair on me, is what I'm bringing up right now.
But you have to remember, if you come to us next month or the month after, the month after, and ask us to put a structure on your side, and we've denied them, do you think the odds are good you're going to get it?
No, they're not. And so that's what I'm saying, you deny, I'll be denied too. Because we'll be, I'm like, it should be the same treatment, that's all I'm going to get.
Every, every, every project that's brought before us is based on the merits of that project.
Right.
Not what the neighbor's doing, the guy across the street. We base it on what they presented to us.
Yeah, but if the structure was 15 feet apart, like, within the guidelines and everything, without a variance, I would have no issues with it. Like, whatever we would be doing would be not asking for variance. When the variance comes into the picture, that's something like, we're considering for one, one neighbor, and we, I would expect us to do the same thing with the other neighbor as well, to be, to be fair. And as you said, you reject them, you reject me, I have no problems with that. If they get rejected, I know I'll get rejected. I'm not going to put, put it over there. I'm going to start looking for something else. Where do I do it? What do I do with it? But not in that place, because of the same reason, I don't, the variance was not accepted.
You're saying 20 feet apart. We don't have any numbers on that. You're throwing a number out there.
No.
We don't know what you're doing. It could be 18 feet, it could be 30 feet.
No, 20 feet I'm saying is because considering, I take the same variance and look, measuring the property lines, yeah. Exactly.
That's, that's Scott said, that's, I don't even think that's before us tonight.
No.
So, okay, so in favor, not in favor?
Not in favor as a moment because of the reasons side is.
Okay, thank you.
So could we just get some clarification on that retaining wall? I see it on the sketch, is it? Where are we today and where are we going? At the end of the day, we accepted this. What would happen to the retaining?
Yeah, so it was original to when we purchased the property. We found that it's, I don't remember, over 10 or whatever years old. Right now, we are talking with the contractor and stuff like that. We have an idea of possibly removing it. However, he tells us that, you know, until he starts putting in foundation and things like that, seeing what's the best option of filling in that space and stuff like that. We are not opposed to removing the retaining wall. We just don't know, in terms of like, when you start digging, is that the right choice to remove it or not the right choice to remove it? I don't know in terms of land, you know what I mean? That's all, so...
But regardless, it's not on your property?
It is not on our property.
So would you have a problem if one of the orders of conditions was the wall had to be put on your property?
Um, I mean...
Or use the foundation, right?
Yeah. No.
Our quote we have right now, that we're looking at from a contractor, he does have removing the retaining wall. He just doesn't know until, like Sean was saying, we start construction, what's going to be in its place? Is it just going to be filled in with like a little retaining wall, like that kind of thing? Isn't, but he does have in the quote, like, okay, I can remove this, we can, you know, fill it in, that's ideal. He just doesn't have a number and a design.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, typically, when we condition something like that, we give you a period of time to do it.
Oh, okay.
So it's not like it has to be done before you start construction or anything else. We'll give you some, some measure of time so that you have time to do your principal thing, and then you can work on the other stuff.
Okay.
Because the other fence that's on there, that's a pretty simple post and rail fence. You could take one section out and you're pretty...
Yeah, I have actually spoken to that neighbor who, he explained the whole deal with me about the fence, because, again, that was another thing that was there when we purchased the property and telling me the previous homeowner put it there because of the roots in the ground and the trees, but we already discussed it. We'll be moving the fence and putting it on our property.
Okay. What's the height of that retaining wall?
It's...
It starts at maybe like two feet, but it comes up to like seven, six feet, like it's, because it's pretty high. It goes to like where the existing garage is.
I mean, it's a drop-off right now.
It's a pretty steep drop-off, so it's...
Yeah, that's where you see a vinyl fence on that drawing.
Just because of the kids in the backyard.
David, did you have your question answered?
Yes and no. This is what I'm hearing, and help me out here. You've got this project you want to do. Part of the deal is to take the retaining wall out of there, but you don't know its impact until it's taken out. But it strikes me that that could have an impact on the neighbor as well as yourself. Is that, I mean, am I, is my, is that the right assessment or am I missing something?
Well, they would have to fill, fill in behind whatever goes there, you know, and level his property off.
Yeah.
So there would be essentially no impact at the end of the day when they're done, would be my guess, against more real estate.
And so this is the retaining wall?
Yep.
Yes.
Talking about right here, from, are we talking about the whole, it's an L shape? We talking about the whole thing?
I mean, if the addition goes forward, then pretty much, yes, where you're saying the whole thing would be gone, yeah, we wouldn't need it. Because the addition would be there, so the foundation would be filling in, and then, yeah, that side lot, that's, that's the one, just...
But am I corrected, so if you, if you took the retaining wall out of there, would the, let's say, the four or five feet that's behind it, would that come down to the driveway elevation?
No, because the addition's...
That's where the addition's going to be.
Foundation's going to hold up that section of it. Foundation's gonna hold up that section of it.
Do we, do we have a plan or something that shows that? Is that? I'm just trying to visualize.
We did provide updated elevations and such.
This is the retaining wall right there, right?
Yeah.
So, the, so the addition is here, then you got 11.8 feet to the retaining wall, retaining wall comes out of there.
Foundation's gonna take the place of the wall. You can see up on the screen now.
From the front corner of the garage to this side.
I think it just graded off.
Yeah. Probably have this.
It's filled in, or it got filled in plus a short.
It's coming in from the side and the back.
You're talking about right here?
Right. It's sloping from back to front. It's also gonna be sloping from left to right, I mean, right to left.
Yeah, I just.
I think the question is, yes, the wall's coming out, and until they get the foundation in, I don't think they know what's gonna replace it, or how they're gonna grade it, and direct down to the ground, or put a smaller wall in, or whatever. I think that's gonna be to be announced.
Either way, the wall would be on their property.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the ultimate goal, is to get the wall on their property, and not the neighbor's property.
All right. And it seems like, from that photo, whatever wall is there, you're gonna, you're gonna wanna redo that. Put a more substantial wall up, probably, and it's, you're putting a new addition on, you don't want that old wall to be problematic down the road a couple of years, so you'd get a more substantial wall to the backside, perhaps, if you do one. But then it's done, as the new addition's done, rather than having a wall that's gonna be problematic in the future. It's seen.
Okay, so one last question, and I'll stop. And this is a hypothetical question. If your neighbor wants to come in here with a plan in a year, or two years, and he wants to be within 10 feet of your property line, are you gonna have any objection to that?
We, I, we, I think me and my wife speak, is that, we've always reached out to him and said that, this, we, this is something we're hoping for, please work with us, and we wanna work with you in the future.
This is, I'm asking a question, I'm not your obstacle game. I said, if he came in here with a plan, hypothetically, and wanted to be 10 feet off your line, would you accept it?
I'd like to see his plan, obviously.
You're not answering the question. I'm trying to help you.
Sure. I, to be honest, I would probably say yes, because we won't, we care about.
Well, I tell you, on the basis of your answers, I'm not in favor of your plan. I'll just leave it at that. Because both of you are trying to avoid answering the question. And I don't, we're trying to be fair to everybody.
Sure.
And as Scott has said, we can't make judgments about what your neighbor may or may not come in with. But I think you're asking, in my mind, a stretch, to come to 9.6. And I understand the circumstances. On the other hand, but what's good for the goose is good for the gander.
So it's actually showing 9.8, which calculates to nine feet, nine inches, which is three inches away from 10 feet. So, you know, if that's an issue, when we get into construction, you know, we can try to push back that three inches. I mean, it's, it's, it's close. I mean, you know, we're trying to make sure we can pull a car into our garage and just have like, a living room. And yes, if they're supportive with us, we're obviously gonna be supportive with them. That's the short answer, in my mind.
I agree.
All right. Well, I think also, we don't have any, again, hypotheticals, I think the operative word here, Dave, we don't have any idea what his house looks like, we have no idea where his house sits, we have no idea what his options might be for an addition. He's saying he wants to put it, you know, abutting theirs, but maybe there's room in the back of his house, maybe there's some other option that he would pursue. I mean, we, we have, you know, he's suggesting he's gonna put it 10 feet from their property. But that's a true suggestion now, we have. I understand that.
He may have a different plan, and he may be 15 feet, or he may be some other place, or he may go up, or out front, or.
Okay, so that's, this isn't the issue that's in front of us.
I don't think we should consider what he's doing in the future, as it impacts down tonight with this plan. I don't, I don't think that's a quid pro quo here, I think it's a, it's a, if he came in and he said, here's my plan, here's my house, here's my schematic, here's my dimensions, okay, that would be, I think that'd be a different story. But with him saying, I'm gonna do something, that's a little bit of a jump ball, in my opinion.
Okay, so, the lot next door is not our concern today. What we're concerned about is what's in front of us, regardless of who's living next door, what's gonna be done, and what's not gonna be done. Is there anybody else in the audience to speak in favor of this? Anybody else in the audience to speak opposing this? I'm seeing none. Any more questions from the board?
No.
Okay. So the only condition that I would think we would, should do is have the retaining wall removed off, in the fence, removed off of the neighbor's property, in a reasonable amount of time.
Would you like that to be prior to a certificate of occupancy, or within six months of certificate of occupancy? It'd be good to have some sort of.
When do you think you're gonna stop this?
Honest, it might not be till early next year, or end of this year, I mean, it kinda just.
To make it concurrent with the construction?
Yeah, I feel like.
When they start construction?
Three, six months after occupancy, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, three months after occupancy.
Cause we also have to, when, when you see our existing steps of the retaining wall on the, like, bottom left, we're gonna have to redo some of that, too, so we're, you know, we're gonna have to make it cohesive and look nice, anyway, so.
Okay. If there's nothing else from the board, can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
One second.
Jim made the motion, Jay seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, what we are here for is a variance for construction of approximately 430 square feet addition, resulting in a 9.8 side yard setback, where 15 feet is required. Okay, the rest of it was old news. Can we have that motion?
Joe, move.
Jay made the motion, Jim seconded it. Dave?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Scott Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
And I'll also vote in affirmative. So you have your variance, so staff has 14 days to write the decision, there is an appeal period, 21 days, and then after that, you can get your building permit and start going.
Thank you.
All right. Good luck, good luck. Okay, the next item is Seven Rome Drive. Dan, will you sit in on this for me?
Sure.
So we got all the players here, okay, Joe.
All right, so for this one, again, sticking with the variance criteria, this time we're looking at a rear yard setback. The applicant's looking to install an in-ground pool. Typically, 30 feet is what is required in this district, so the applicant is looking for relief to bring that to 10 feet, to within 10 feet of the rear property line.
All right, can we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Go.
Jim made the motion, Jay seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
It's the malicious show.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, attorney Melissa Robbins from the law firm of Farrell and Robbins. I'm here tonight with Christopher Burns and his wife, who are the owners of Seven Rome Drive. I'm also here with Brian Malisi, who is from Haley Ward. He is the project engineer, and I thought it'd be helpful to have him here today, just to go through a couple of details, and to address a couple of concerns of the abutters. As Mr. Genowitz has pointed out, we're here tonight for a rear yard setback variance. The rear yard for an RA zoning district is 30 feet, and we're requesting 10 feet. So are you gonna venture five?
Yeah.
The one, yeah, this is that one. The property is surrounded by, almost all of the sides, by residential property, with the exception of right behind Seven Rome Drive, right where you see where it says now we're formerly of Orchard Hills Trust. That is conservation restricted land, held by the trust. Can you go to the next slide? I'm a little awkward. That's, the pool is actually nowhere around all of the abutting properties. Five Rome Drive, which is to the right side of the property, maybe the backup, like, the plan that shows like, the site with the houses around it. I think it should be the very first slide in the presentation. Sorry. You've jumped ahead. Okay, that's a good one. So you can see Seven Rome Drive there, is one with the little red dot. Five Rome Drive would be to the right-hand side, that structure's about 240 feet from where we're proposing the pool. Nine Rome Drive, to the left-hand side, I'm sure my engineer doesn't like my directional skills here, that's 220 feet from the proposed pool. And then to the, across the street is actually our closest property, which is Nine Rome Drive, and that's, oh, excuse me, Ten Rome Drive, and that's 200 feet from the proposed pool. So there's no structures close to the pool, the pool will be in the rear. Can you go to the next one? The property clearly has a hardship going to the soil shape and topography. I think you saw from the earlier slides that it is triangular in shape with a point at the end, it really limits the building envelope on the site. Also, there's quite a grade going up to the front of the property. Can you go to the next one, Sierra? You can see this is front, looking right at the building, and even looking down, you can see that that extreme slope goes all the way down the front of the house, which really limits all accessory structures to be to the rear of the property, it's not usable for construction. As was pointed out in your staff report, this site actually during construction in 2001, received a front yard setback based on those variance standards, for six feet from the front yard. So they have 44 feet from the front yard to the road here already, an existing variance from 2001. Can you go to the next slide? Thank you. So the lot is also limited by the location of the septic system, so as you look at the rear yard here, it's an orange button. This is why I never use the clicker. Are you gonna give it to Joe? Sorry, one second.
I'm an engineer, I'm not one of those guys.
Okay, so, when you get into the rear yard off the grade, you can see that we have a septic area there, and as is noted in the Board of Health comments, we have to be 20 feet away from that septic area, so we've actually given ourselves one foot, and are located 21 feet from that septic area, which the Board of Health has found acceptable, because we meet their standards. So once we actually get into that little pocket, that's now the backyard, which is the buildable area, the closest we can come to the septic, we are 10 feet from our rear lot line. My client always believed that they had more area back there. They bought the house thinking that that rear rock wall was their property line. Will you go to the next one, Sierra? This is the subdivision plan that created Rome Drive extension, and I only pull it up so the board can see. That survey plan holds the stone wall as the property line. This is the, this is the land which was described in the deed to the client, when they bought this property for Seven Rome Drive, so they always believed that that was the property line. These clients did not build the house, there was a builder that built the house, if you go to the next slide, you can see, one more, Sierra, I'm sorry. You can see this is Seven Rome Drive, this is the cleared area, this is basically how the lot and the rock wall line is today, and you're gonna see through these slides, that Google Earth gets better and better, cause this is 2001, you can go down the next one. This is after the house was constructed, but before the landscaping went in, you can see it says up on the top left corner, this is the 2005 map, stone wall still there, no landscaping in, go ahead, Sierra. 2007, they're roughing in landscaping in this area, including well into that area that we now know is not our property, but to the stone wall, keep on going, Sierra. And then this is the property completely developed, I can't see the top tag, but I think it's 2010, before my client bought it, my client bought it in 2011. Landscaping is fully in, it's really gorgeous, but they are using that stone wall. And now we find out, once we do survey with Mr. Malisi's team, that that stone wall is actually 20 feet into the trust land. So my client doesn't even own that property at all. The only addition that my client did to this property, beyond this beautiful landscaping, the maintenance, the mulch and all of that on a yearly basis, was he did put a fence right on the other side, like, at the wall. So you can see in some of the pictures that I put in your packet, there is a wall beyond that, excuse me, a fence beyond the wall. He understands now, this is not his property, that he needs to bring all of this in, it all has to be remediated, even though that none of that disturbance was his fault. He's already hired Mr. Malisi's team to go out there and re-stake the fence area, so that his black fence can come in on the other side of the rock wall. I will point out that my client was thinking that he has a little bit over 40,000 square feet here, it's, I think, 4103. He was thinking he could cut off the edge of his property, where there's an easement going up to the trail, and give the conservation trust that land, and try to do a land swap, so that the disturbed land could stay in his backyard, which would have, would not have required a variance from your board. But the trust wasn't interested in proceeding with there, which was fine, we can appreciate their concerns, I think you might have their comments in your packet, they were worried about, you know, a slippery slope, other people incurring in their area, remediating this disturbed area, so we did have a discussion scheduled for the Conservation Commission on the 10th, and we told them that we weren't going to proceed with the land swap, we were going to go forward with the variance and try to deal with it, with our real property line, which is what I'm showing you today. I'm not going to go anymore into the incursion, or the remediation, cause I understand it's outside of the scope of this board, but I'm just telling you that the Conservation Commission put a comment in the board's packet that says that they wish, they wish if the board approves this variance, that they put a condition in place that says that that land must be remediated to their satisfaction prior to the occupancy of that pool, and we're absolutely fine with that condition. It's completely my client's intention to remediate that area, get out of the land that's clearly not his, and remediate it to Mr. Salem's satisfaction. So if the board is inclined to approve the variance, we'd be satisfied with that condition. I'll say no more about that area. So a literal enforcement of the zoning bylaw would prohibit most accessory structures from being built in this backyard. You can see from the size, and the setback, and the septic area, and then the grade leading up to this house, we really have a very narrow shape in the back, and we're only 15 feet off of the edge of our house right now, so there's really not enough space for any structures, including a pool, without a backyard variance. It really removes any construction out there. I think the petition can be granted without substantial detriment to the public, and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this bylaw, because the intent of the bylaw is for spacing between structures, and to make sure that you have separation between uses. Clearly here, we have huge separations between structures. We're 200 feet plus to any surrounding structures, then there's the open space of the trust, which now we are going to remediate of no fault of our own, and then there's a substantial space between us and Lake Silver Road due to the conservation land in the rear. So there's no fear here of any closeness to related structures or related uses. We did get comments from a couple of abutters that were worried about drainage and erosion once we put this pool in, so I just would like to give Mr. Malisi a second, just to address those concerns.
Evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Brian Malisi with Haley Ward. If we could go to the site plan, I think it's a couple back. What we did is we included topography on the site plan, showing where the pool is gonna go, and I think some of the pictures showed it fairly well, there's a fairly decent slope in the front, however, there's a stone retaining wall, which is shown, which really separates that slope with the rest of the yard. Most of the yard area where the house is, where the septic system is, is fairly flat grade. You can see where we pointed out, there's an existing playground area where the pool is going to go, so it's fairly flat there, you get to the rear of the property line, and then again, it kinda jumps up in grade. So really, from a stormwater standpoint, there's no stormwater issues here. Once the pool is excavated and put in, and re-graded, there's gonna be zero change. Once the pool is excavated and put in and regraded, there's gonna be zero changes to the hydrology or the topography and whatnot. Erosion control, again, you know, Mr. Burns is going through these new, I call them new, but these almost these fiberglass insert type of pool construction, probably seen them on flatbeds. They come in tipped up on their side. The hole is dug, the fiberglass insert is put into the ground and it's backfilled. It's usually a two-day, maybe a three-day operation, you know, done correctly, and the amount of disturbance is really minimal. So there really isn't any concerns, especially on this lot, as far as erosion control or even stormwater issues.
And there's been no water issues in the area with any stormwater, erosion, or other pools or structures in the area. So we feel that we're similar to those other structures or pools in the area. I just submitted this today, so I just wanted to make sure that the board had hard copies. My client did go around to try to speak to the abutters. First, the proximity abutters, but then some of the 300 feet of abutters, just to see if they had any objections to his application. You can see who signed it. I highlighted the abutters in purple that signed the sheet saying that they had no objection to the pool. You can see that it's every abutter that actually directly abuts his property. I did see a comment from another abutter that they took issue with the fact that we said all direct abutters had signed this application. I just think there was some confusion. The town certifies an abutters list, but that's 300 feet of abutters, for which that abutter is one, and she did not, in fact, sign that sheet. But all direct abutters, which would be the people that touch the property and the abutters to those abutters, did sign off on the form, saying that they had no objection to the pool being installed in that area. Our project site is highlighted in yellow.
So is this big space here?
That's the open space.
All conservation land?
Correct. Correct. And that's the area there, where if you see, if you look at the plan that's up on the screen, that wall is the area that was shown on the subdivision plan as the lot line. But his actual lot line is that hard, black line that runs in front of the wall by 20 feet. So had that been his lot line, that would, the pool would have fit without a variance. Right. Yeah. And so, and the open space is held by trust, and then there is a conservation restriction, which I think is referenced in the staff documents as well. And that restriction is held by the conservation, Westford Conservation Land Trust and the Westford Conservation Commission, Justin Clayton, in case anybody was curious how the Conservation Commission got involved. So it is being maintained, and once the board had, once the commission had seen that there'd been an issue out here, that's why they were brought in. So that's open space in perpetuity.
Did you say they built a fence beyond the rock wall?
Right on the edge of the rock wall. So as you see where it says line of stones on this plan, right at that, right at that rock wall, you can see there's a line, they put a fence right there.
So that is on his property, though, right?
No.
No, it's not.
No, none of that, all of that land, including the rock wall that they thought was, that they thought was their property, is not on their property at all. And I have to tell you that that fence has been there for decades since Mr. Burns bought this property in 2011. So, but we are, right now, going to survey. We understand that's not our property. We're going to get off of it. We're going to put the fence on our property line. We're gonna put it with a survey. And that area back there, I know this is outside the board's scope, but I just want to make sure that it's clear, all of that area will be remediated to Mr. Salem's satisfaction.
Is there an active foot trail now?
There's a trail right beyond, so beyond the wall, there's a couple wood markers, and then there's a trail and a trail easement back there.
It's not active.
Yeah, it's not, but it, there is, there is a trail there, yes. Yep, and it's marked. And you can see right at the end of Mr. Burns' property there, there says 15-foot-wide trail easement. That's actually the access to the trail that runs behind the stone wall.
So I can attest to the fact that Mr. Burns had nothing to do with the landscaping up on that hill back when the previous owner had it. I happen to be the guy that rented the excavator to the landscaper that did the work, because I was in the rental business. And I apologize, not knowing, you know, okay, great, I got my $260 and off we go. But, and it's a, it's a pretty good hill back there, too.
There would have been no way to know, because at the time, under a previous commissioner, for that work, there wouldn't have been any need for an additional plan set to prove your lot lines or to certify a plot land to any construction. So the subdivision plan was relied upon, and the subdivision plan very clearly holds that rock wall as its lot line. So nobody, not even the contractors, would know. It's clear in the Google Maps.
What's the topography from the lot, actual lot line to that stone wall?
You can see the lines are on there. Because I have an engineer, I will let him answer, so go ahead, Brian.
It's a moderately, moderately steep slope. It's not, it's not as steep as the front slope, but it definitely rises in elevation anywhere from, you know, eight to 12 feet, and it rises up. So when you're standing where the pool location is, you're actually, you're not in a hollow, but you're in a level area, and the topography behind the lot rises.
Yeah, and you can see right behind the corner of the pool to the west, you can see the topography lines go up. You see the 328, 330, 332, so it's going uphill right behind the pool.
So you're saying he's gonna have to cut into that slope, or is he gonna fill the downslope side?
Nope, he's not gonna have to cut into the slope. The pool actually fits very nicely into that, we'll call it the 327 contour, if you will. There may be a little bit of slight encroaching to that 328 contour, just to be able to get a walkway or a concrete deck around it. But we're not, where the pool is located, fortunately, we don't have to cut into that slope at all.
Mr. Chairman, a different direction here, entirely. You know, we had deja vu on here. We went through this as a tutorial with Jonathan back a few years back, when Mr. Bob Herman arranged that session, on various criteria, as comes out this yellow sheet. And look at the criteria first before you start redesigning the project. Is there a hardship? An example, his point was pools. Everybody in town has a hardship to put a pool in, per se. You can take any lot in this town and say, we need a variance, we want to put in a pool. Is it a hardship to have a pool? Or is it a want? Is it a prefer? Is it we'd like to have? So I am still not understanding how we address pools as a hardship.
But this isn't a hardship as to the use of the pool. So you're, you're right. If I'm asking for a use, and that that use is a hardship, the pool itself. But in this case, we're not, the use of the pool is allowed by rights. Okay? We have that use check. The question is a structural question. This is a structure. Is there a hardship to this land that requires us to move our box for our structure around? Okay? It's not a use question, it's a structure question. So it's a question of, is there a hardship owing to the soil shape and topography that leads to us not being able to conform to the regular setbacks unlike any other lot in that neighborhood? So that's why, when I talk about the hardship owing to the soil shape or topography, you can see on this lot, we're talking about a triangular lot that has very limited area, which is a small triangle that you can actually construct in, which is actually taken up, in this case, by the entire house. There's no place to put an accessory structure on this property except the area of the septic system in this instance. And the only way to put it in behind the septic system is to go into the rear yard setback, which is what we're asking for relief for. We're not-
Okay, but apart from that, Melissa, the other criteria is a little enforcement of provision of the ordinance by law involves substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner.
Right.
So the soil and topography is a separate issue.
Right.
Is there a hardship that's financial to the petitioner?
Right.
Financial hardship, you have, you have to have an in-law apartment because your mother-in-law has to come live with you. A pool is, in my mind, is a luxury. Not having a pool, in my mind, is not a financial hardship.
But in this instance, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It's a financial hardship or otherwise, okay? And I think that we have both here. Mr. Burns bought this property thinking that he could build a pool without coming to this board, okay? So he has a unique hardship there. That wall is what's shown on his subdivision plan. It's not his, and that land is not his, okay? So he really is only left with 10 feet to build any accessory structure on his property. And, and so any accessory structure that needs a setback, which is any storage shed over 120 square feet, a pool, a fence over six feet, we're gonna have to come to this board in order to get variance relief. I would say that's a hardship to otherwise. It's also a financial hardship to the value of his property. Mr. Burns bought this with the financial intention that he'd be able to have a very usable backyard with landscaping, which is very expensive, which he's kept now for 10 years, and now he's limited to an area which is only 10 feet wide that he can do nothing with. So I think that's the hardship or otherwise. Okay? I think it's financial to the value of this lot, and then I think it's a hardship to the actual use of this lot, because it's limited now. It's nothing, almost. Anything that's structural needs a variance. There's nothing I can do in this backyard that I don't have to come to this board. Nothing.
I don't know, I don't, I'm not 100% convinced, I guess, but, you know, financial hardship. You bought the house, and obviously the value of the house increases annually, so you lose a little bit of a backyard because of this sort of configuration that was, I don't know, I, I don't know how, when you, when you buy a piece of property, that the deed doesn't necessarily, how that slips through so many hands, and this, this rock wall becomes somebody's imaginary line. That's, that's a little confounding to me, too. But I just, I'm not, again, I think the board, as a rule, jumps into building a process, building a project here before he considers these areas, which were instructed to consider first.
Right.
That's why I bring it up.
Agreed.
You know, we jump to third base before we start on first base sometimes, and that's what we're consistently doing. We're doing it here with this.
Right.
And I, that's why I brought up the hardship issue.
Sorry.
Because I'm not convinced that there's a hardship for anyone who needs a pool. It's, it's, I think it's, it's more of a luxury than a hardship.
Any other questions from the board? Concerns?
Well, only a comment. I think it's on the buyer or purchaser to determine what he's buying. And I'm not really willing to buy in that they always thought the stone wall was the lot line. I mean, that's not, it isn't the way it works. And I don't think you have to be terribly sophisticated to know that. And I think if you went back and looked at the property records at the time of the purchase, I think you would see the lot line, because I don't think the bank would have financed it without knowing what the lot was. And I, I think Jim has a point on a hardship. The other thing I have a bit of a problem with is people assume that land that's put in conservation is free, because there are houses back there, it doesn't matter. Well, I think it, I think the intent of town is that it does matter. That it's just, the lot line is a lot line, whether or not it's another property back there or conservation.
Mr. Chair, if I just may, the subdivision plan that this planning board, the town of Westford Planning Board signed, which was relied on for the creation of the lot, shows the rock wall as the boundary. So there wouldn't be another surveyed piece. That plan that's, Sierra, I think it's right before the colored drawings, that's the one. This is the actual plan of record that was, this is pulled directly from the subdivision plans, from the creation of Rome Drive. So there isn't another plan of record that creates this lot. This is it. So when I, as an attorney, deed a lot, I say, Lot 1, as shown on a plan entitled Rome Drive, as shown on this plan, and this is what shows it. So I don't think that there was anything sneaky or suspicious or anything about going back to the stone wall or being able to assume that's a stone wall. That's the subdivision plan of record. And every, the builder even thought that was it, and went all the way back there, and it's been that way for 21 years since the lot was put in place. At no error of Mr. Burns to incur into the conservation restriction area. And if you look at the plans to the rear of this lot, it actually shows the stone wall, the fence, and then two wood markers, and then the trail. So it looks like the conservation restriction area is beyond that. But I do agree with you, Mr. Earl, that I like now, when they create these areas that are directly above a conservation restriction area, that there's signage, because that doesn't happen anymore when there's a backyard to an open space, because it stops the creep and it stops those issues you just raised. But in this particular instance, I don't think that it was any fault of any of the lot owners or the builders, because that's what's shown on the plan that was approved, stamped by a surveyor and signed by the town of Westford Planning Board. I mean, how many more, how much more evidence do you need that that's your lot? So I just wanted to address that. But this is the plan. This is not a plan we pulled out. This is the plan of record.
Jay, do you have any comment?
No, I'm all set.
Danny? Scott?
Nope.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody in the audience to speak in opposition to this proposal? Come up to the microphone and give us your name, please.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Melmer. I'm, I'm just up the hill.
What, your address, what number?
I'm at 12 Lake Silver Road. So I'm up the, the hill directly above the house. And I just wanted to make sure you got to read my letter, because I did submit a letter to the Department of, to Erin and to Sierra. So I just wanted to make sure that you all-
So to be honest with you, no, because all submittals should be in the Friday before this meeting.
Okay, I was told Monday, Monday evening, so, all right. So I was going with what Erin and Sierra had told me. But I just wanted to be able to point out, concern I have is that the, the, well, you know, it's too bad the letter wasn't seen, because I did spend a good amount of time on it.
I think it was just submitted today, so sometimes when it's submitted the day of the meeting, you don't have a chance. So I did print it out.
I emailed it yesterday.
Did email it to them. If you emailed it after hours, we might have received it.
I emailed it yesterday, and I got a confirmation from Erin that it was included.
Okay, you sent two, so one thing was yesterday, two of them were today. So I'm just trying to explain that we did our best to get them to the board-
Yeah, the big one was yesterday. The big one was yesterday, and Erin confirmed, I made that deadline.
The smaller ones were today?
I'm sorry?
The two smaller ones were today, then?
I think the small one was just after my phone call with you, when you suggested I email it.
Okay, all right. I did include all three emails in the revised, two of the emails in the revised package.
Okay, so let me just try to, I'll try to sum it up. It was a long letter. But what I wanted to say is that I am up the hill, and I do want to be a good neighbor, and it's not about not being a good neighbor. I'm just interested in the, the conservation land stretch between us, because that particular hill is a very, very steep conservation land hill. It's quite a drop-off from my property down to that, where the edge of the property is. So for me, from my perspective, I care a lot about the conservation land, keeping its trees, keeping its erosion control. And I also think about, you know, if that offset is changed from the 30 to the 10, that means all of a sudden, whatever vegetation is on the slope of that conservation land could lose integrity, because, you know, roots or whatever cut off from the big trees. So I worry about the stability of the land and the trees not getting undermined by a big hole going in the ground there that could perhaps, you know, from a physicist's standpoint, maybe physics is involved, or, or just the roots itself, you know, hindering the trees, and then there's like a domino effect. So that, because, that's really because of the nature of that very steep land that's between our houses. I like the trees, because number one, it keeps the slope, and, you know, it's, because it is so steep, it's gotta be wooded and vegetated. Number two, from my perspective, it's also a barrier to the highway noise and to pollution and just keeping, really making sure the integrity of the land's act. So that's, those are some things I have, because if it's, if it's, if it's a 10-foot offset, that's a big difference for any kind of root systems that might be helping to retain that steep slope. If it's a 30-foot, well, okay, fewer roots and fewer things that are erosion control-related, protecting the conservation land would be involved. So, you know, and I do wonder, because of the inherent nature of this property being on a steep hill that continues to go down to the swamp, I do wonder the impact of that particular property with the hole being dug and any kind of short-term or long-term potential negative impact that could happen, you know, whether anticipated or not, over time, to the actual, you know, the hill that goes down to the swamp, the wildlife, you know, so it's those kinds of things. So it's, that's sort of my explanation of my concern with erosion, with potential runoff or contamination or whatever, losing integrity of that yard. I wonder about an above-ground pool. You know, maybe an above-ground pool, at least for my concerns, that makes me feel more comfortable, because then all of a sudden, the, the concerns I have about the steep pit- more comfortable because then all of a sudden the concerns I have about the steep hill, all this, those are much more feasible, you know, it's just more relaxed because you're not, you're not hindering the integrity of the hill. So that's really what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
My letter was long-winded, but, you know, that's, I hope that helps.
Thank you.
I do wish the best for everybody.
Anybody else in the audience to speak to this?
Mr. Chair, if I'd like, I can just respond to a couple of her concerns that are easy.
Sure.
Sure, so we're not cutting any trees, zero trees to build this pool. And as a matter of fact, as you've heard, we'll be re-establishing some behind the pool as well. So there's no concern whatsoever as to trees or erosion. Mr. Melissa's already spoke to the fact that there's no erosion or stormwater issues. And as we're going through site plan review, if this board approves, there will also be erosion controls put in place during construction. So that would not be an issue at all.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you have something to say?
Yeah.
Please come up to the microphone, give us your name, where you live.
This is Anavitra from Ken, Blake's Hill, adjacent to her, 12 Blake's Hill. And I'm also direct aborder. And I had similar concerns because when I look at the edge of my land in the back, it's a very steep slope. And was concerned if that particular 30 feet to 10 feet, you know, that kind of adjustment, would that have any concerns with the slope integrity? You know, because a few, actually a year back, I was doing the sprinkler system and when they were cutting just six inches into that, my house was shaking. So I was a little bit concerned that, you know, such a big pool with so much near, would that be a concern? And I raised that concern with Sarah and I think she was trying to say that, you know, because there's a conservation line in between, it shouldn't be a problem. That's what the idea is. So I'm just going to trust the town and the board on this thing. You know, but the concern is there. That's what I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the audience?
Mr. Chair, if I may, just, we did measure, we did a general measurement and those houses behind us are well over 400 feet away and they're well up gradient of us, which starts after our pool. So there's no concern whatsoever about the degradation of their erosion uphill from us. And there's other structures and other items in their backyard similar that has no issue with the grading coming down to our property. It'll be exactly the same.
Okay. Seeing as nobody else.
Mr. Chair, before you close the public hearing, do you think that we could ask the voting members their comments about...
Yeah, hang on one minute, Melissa. Would you like to make a comment?
Yes.
Please come up to the microphone and give us your name.
Hi, my name is Prasanna and I'm the representative for the Orchard Hill Trust, the homeowners' association who own the trust land. And we have expressed our concern about the land swap issue that was brought to us. And in last week, we provided a letter stating that why we are not interested in the land swap. And all we are concerned about is anything should not be impacting the conservation land. That's what we are concerned about.
All right, thank you.
From Ken, Blake's Hill, also part of the trust.
Mm-hmm.
So same concern. We want to maintain the integrity of the conservation.
The trust is not our issue, okay? We're here on a zoning issue, but thank you for your comments. So it appears that they would like a little bit of a poll to see what everybody is thinking. So Dan, do you have a problem with this? Jim and I do not. Scott Fitzgerald?
In this particular case, no. I do agree with Jim, a pool is a luxury, but in this situation where there's an actual paperwork showing the stone wall is the property line and he was misled, I would be in favor of it.
Gerald?
I'm not sold.
Okay.
Again, I think, you know, the variance criteria comes to my mind. I understand the hot, the stone wall thing. I just, I mean, that drawing, somebody, if you did measurements from that drawing, somebody drew a stone wall in there. The wall that showed in the previous picture was a misshapen, it wasn't a straight-line wall like that. So I'm not, I don't know how this slipped. It is a little bit of an aberration here because of that, that whole issue, Melissa. And had not that been the case, I certainly have been 100% opposed. But that's a little bit of a quirk in the whole thing, in my mind.
Jay?
I'm in favor of it.
Okay. And I don't have a problem with it. So you're happy?
Yes.
Move on?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So I don't think there is any, I think the one order of conditions that we should put in there is that the conservation land returned back to the state that makes the Conservation Trust happy and the occupancy permit for the pool cannot be issued until that's done. So it'll hold their feet to the fire a little bit.
You said you have to go back to Planning Board first?
Yep, we'll have to go to Planning Board for site plan review and we are in, oh, no, no, excuse me, we're not in site plan review. I'm confusing my projects. This will not go to site plan review. We will still, please, as a condition of the permit, say that we'll put in erosion control. Excuse me. Yes, that was a misstatement. Excuse me.
Okay. So did you get that condition, Joe? I know we're all over the place here, but...
One last question for the engineer. Can you, do you have any type of vision on how the equipment's going to access that back area?
Yeah, we'd like, if you want to go back, they're going to just kind of right up the driveway. They're going to have to utilize the driveway as a staging area. They may have to dismantle some of the wall to, you know, the west or plan west, plan left, if you will, access it right through there. You know, come up and down that slope along Rome Drive Extension will not work.
Okay.
Utilize the driveway as a staging area, put their trucks there when they're excavating it, all that stuff off. And again, once that excavation is done, once that pool is in and regraded, it really becomes like a pickup truck, you know, type of job. They're going to be bringing either pay, road, car, or whatnot, so.
From that drawing, what's the distance from the house to the pool?
15 feet.
15 feet?
Yes.
Can that be?
Can't come any closer because the septic system's there. So that's, we have 20 feet to the septic and we gave ourselves...
21, yeah, 21 and, yeah, that's...
We gave ourselves a one-foot buffer.
That corner is...
That corner, the closest corner is 15 feet.
If you will, if you took the pool and literally slid it along the property line, you'd be able to the east or plan right, you'd get closer to the septic system. So we're as far as that way as we can go. If you take that pool and kind of slide it the other way, you start to get a little closer to the roof of the house. So we really kind of, we really kind of did a little bit of homework there and that's really the spot that it wants to go.
Okay, everybody all set? So can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, second.
Motion made by Jimmy, seconded by Jay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So 7 Rome Drive, we are looking for a variance from Appendix C to construct a 30-by-14-inch ground pool with a rear yard setback of 10 feet with 30 feet as required. Can I have that motion?
So moved, second.
A motion made by Jay, seconded by Jim. Dan?
Yes.
Scott Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I will also vote in the affirmative.
Thank you very much, members of the board. I'll leave you now. Have a great night.
Good night.
Thank you.
We don't pay attention to this. I'm not working on the fucking board. Because it qualifies as a variance.
Hey, you're welcome.
Have fun, have fun.
You're lucky kids.
They're so lucky. Thank you.
After the meeting, I'll tell you how that stone wall showed up on the...
So Dave, I need your help again on Summer Village.
Quite the beautiful experience.
Thank you, thank you. Well, I, well, we'll get into it.
Somebody's got to take...
All right, so the next item on the agenda is Summer Village modification with all kinds of paperwork and...
That's my only original idea.
Two items here in a way. So it's a modification to prior approvals. So the, two items before you, one is seeking modification, one is seeking kind of a clarification of how you interpret prior decisions. The clarification piece is whether or not loft space, that's typically used for storage, is included in these gross square footage calculation limitation of 800 square feet. And then the modification in this case is, right now, the conditions are written that any of the cottages can't be over 800 square feet and also it excludes the allowance of any kind of extension or expansion. The petitioners are looking to modify that to allow some sort of extension or expansion but still be restricted to 800 square feet. So an example could be if they had a 700-square-foot cottage, they wanted to do a 50-square-foot bump out to do like a half bath, it's up to 750, so you're still under 800. Right now, the way the conditions are, it doesn't allow such a modification.
So Joe, did you hear me say that Dave is going to sit on this?
Yes.
Okay.
So let me ask, let me, for clarification, okay?
Can I open?
Oh, sorry.
Can I open, let me, so can we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now David.
Yeah, so I, I think the, my interpretation is a little different, okay? The issue was, I think the board at that time didn't want to exceed 800 square feet so you couldn't bump out beyond the 800. But I think we've since then said, if you're within the 800-foot envelope, it's okay because we were talking about not going from 700 to 800, we were talking about going out two and a half feet or something like that. Is that, aren't all of these cottages more or less 800 square feet? And maybe that's for the board.
So my name is Larry Harrington and this is Bobby. We both are on the board.
The original cottages were closer to 675 square feet and over the 10 to 12 years of finishing the project, they made different design changes and closets that were bumped in became bumped out. And so the last 100 or so cottages are 800 square feet. The issue that you've had in the past, a few owners who were in the original cottages came and asked if they could add a half a bath like the last 100 have. And there was some back and forth and some of those were granted. But the ruling was that no cottage can be greater than 800 square feet. Part of the issue today is we have an owner that would like to add a loft. Many, many owners bought lofts from the developer. It was about a $20,000 option and the loft was purchased. We now have some folks who bought either originally or bought it as a resale and they do not have a loft and they would like to add their loft. The problem is, the question comes in, if you have, like my particular cottage is 800 square feet and I have a loft. Most of the lofts that the developer built, the last 100 or so, the lofts were not included in the 800 square feet. But when the, when the new person came in and asked for a loft, the building inspector said, "Well, it says not more than 800 feet, so I can't approve it unless I get clarification from these folks that the loft is either in the 800 or not in the 800." And part of the issue is that we have over 100 of the lofts that are not in the 800 and now we have some folks that would like to put a loft in, but that loft, is it in the 800? Not in the 800. If it's in the 800, they wouldn't get it approved, but then what about the 100 or so that were approved with the loft excluded from the 800? So we're trying to get some clarification.
And what's the purpose of the loft?
The loft is, per the deed, it's for storage.
Okay, so that's not a whole issue that we're dealing with.
That's correct.
Roughly, what's the square footage of these loft areas?
They can, they, depending on the model, but some of them are probably 150, 170 square feet.
So a question on the process. I think there's something in our material that the association has to prove someone, someone applies to the association for permission to...
Correct.
Have a loft.
Correct.
And then they're required to get a building permit for that.
That's correct.
And does the association use that permit before they say, "Go ahead and get going"? Or...
So what we...
My question is, and my, where I'm going with this, is there's some information in our material, both the building inspector and the fire inspector have come across lofts that seem to have been outside the lines.
So let me...
Without that process of the association making sure that the building department has issued a permit before that loft is, first hammer is brought to the process. Seems like some has, some have skirted that entirely and it's lofts that have sort of just appeared.
So I would disagree with that, sir. I know of no lofts that have been built that were not properly permitted. And the way the process works after, if the developer got his building permits and did all of his stuff through the town's process, since he's exited, anyone who makes a request for, whether it's a bump out for a half a bath or anything that requires a building permit, has to come to the association first. In this particular case for the loft, the board struggled with the fact that there are lofts today approved by the town, occupancy permits by the town, done by the developer, where the loft didn't count in the 800 square feet. So therefore, we gave the approval for this particular loft. When they came to the building inspector for the permit, rightfully so, he was confused because your documents say not more than 800 square feet and he didn't know whether or not that included or excluded. The separate issue that has been raised is that when the developer sold their lofts for $20,000, they reminded every owner that purchased one that they were for storage only. They are carpeted, they have cable, and they have air conditioning. And so what has come up from the building department is that as some people have sold their cottages, real estate agents who list the cottages and have pictures are showing beds up in the loft. And so the question came up as to whether or not anyone has ever slept in a loft. Now, the town doesn't do bed checks every night, nor does the association do bed checks every night. And so in the discussion that we had with the building department is the concern from a safety standpoint is that if you were in the loft and it's 12 feet above the main cottage, there's a ladder that takes you up to the loft. What would happen if there was a fire in the lower part of the loft and you couldn't get out? And so the discussion centered around the fact that if you had a loft, there should be a certain size window in the loft, which the builder had put in on his lofts so that somebody could exit. And there was also a discussion that maybe there should be some kind of a safety ladder up there that has never been required in the, in the past, but if there was a fire so someone could latch it onto the window and then climb out the window if they had to. All the lofts have smoke detectors and things like that. But the issue came up with...
But the loft is for storage.
That's correct.
So you're talking about the both ends of the issue here. The loft is for storage, then there shouldn't be a safety issue up there. The only thing you're losing to a fire is materials. People should not be in the loft.
But this, how do, how do you or we enforce that?
That's the elephant in the room.
That's correct.
That's the elephant in the room since this thing started.
That's correct.
And fire inspector has come across the exact same situation. And we're permitting lofts, or you're saying that everybody should be printed a loft for storage, but I would venture that very few are used for storage and many are used for loft. If their friend's kid comes for the weekend and the kid sleeps on a mattress...
And so that's where the discussion has gone to, is two pieces. One is the loft issue. And even if you denied the loft going forward and say it has to be part of the 800, we still have 125, 140 lofts that are permitted in existence and some for 15 years and some for 10 years, et cetera. So the question became one of, how do we collectively, we the association and you the town, look at, from a practical standpoint, what do we do to ensure safety? We can't do a bed check every night, you can't do a bed check every night. I can't force, I can't ensure that someone's not sleeping up there tonight. You can't that. So the question came, is there a way that we could work collaboratively to require two things? One, any loft going forward had to meet a certain set of conditions set by the building department. And number two, is there a way that we could collectively require, enforce window size and ladder exit so that if someone were up there, they could safely exit? Because if you were to say, "No," I don't know how you enforce it and I don't know how I enforce it or we as enforce it as a board. So as a practical matter, people may use it and put it an extra child, exactly as you said. I can't stop that, but what I can do, what you can do, is ensure there's safety in the event that there was ever a fire and that whoever was up there needed to exit.
We can ensure the safe, perhaps we can show the safety of the existing lots. We can also say, "That's not going to be a future problem because no more lots."
You could, that's correct.
If there's 276 units there and 150 have lots, then that's it. The rest are not going to be a safety issue because no one's going to be up there. The rest are not going to be a safety issue, because no one's going to be up there, because there's no loft.
You could say that, yes.
That would be an alternative position.
That would be an alternative position.
We need to hear from Henry.
So, well, before we go any further, it just so happens I have the building commissioner here tonight.
Yep.
And Henry, would you please come up and kind of go over the stair issue, the ladder issue, the size of the window that would be required?
Mr. Chair, member of the board, Larry, was it going?
Good.
Good. So, the confusion with the lofts is, yeah, they're considered storage, and ship ladder will work for storage area. You can't use a ship ladder for means of egress for bedroom. If you're using, if you're putting a bed up there, and I'll just read it out here in the section of the code. And this has been a struggle with everybody, because we've, I've actually did an inspection where there was a ladder used for bed, and there was a bed that was already up there. Says, "Ship ladder shall not be used as an element of a means of egress. Ship ladder shall be permitted provided that a required mean of a egress stairway or ramp serves the same space." So it's saying that you have to have a set of stairs to go up there. It doesn't say a ladder can work for an area if you're going to use that for bedroom. These spaces here do not, unless they really do some reconfiguring, they're going to come up with some stairs that are going to work for that, if they're going to use those as beds.
How about the units he's talking about where the builder put the loft in, in the original construction? What kind of stairs or ladder is in those units?
When they had the storm, when the tornado hit that area, we seen a lot of the buildings in there. A lot of the buildings were destroyed, so most of them were all ship ladders.
That's correct. They all had ship ladders.
All ship ladders?
That's what he put it for storage.
No, that's not code. It's code for storage.
For storage.
But it's not code for bed.
So, habitable space is not code.
And that's where I struggle with it, because all I care about is the little people that may be sleeping up there.
For sure.
I don't care about anything else.
For sure.
You can put a 5.7 square foot emergency window in there to get them out, and have a ladder on the outside, but who's going to talk to a little person to-
Five-year-old kid can't handle that.
To do that. So that's my concern, is if they want to put beds up there, I'm not against it, I just want to make sure that they can get up there, up and, you know, safe, that's all I care about.
There's something in the staff report that mentions that throughout the years, the building department has observed a number of building code issues such as construction improvements without the benefit of proper permitting. Have you encountered that? Was it your predecessor, or? I mean, it says that the building department hasn't, has run it unpermitted units. Is that a, a once in a while? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Henry, but-
No, that's okay. I can't speak for, yeah, I can't speak for my predecessors, but I can speak that, you know, from time to time, we would run into receiving a phone call from summer village, and it might not be Larry, it just might be somebody just inquiring, what do we do? Do we need a permit? And when we had that storm, a lot of those houses that asked those questions, the work was done. So, like Larry says, he can't-
Well, in that particular case, we hired an outside contractor, and they got building permits, and no work was done. There were 27 cottages, $1.1 million in damage because of the storm. And every one of those were properly permitted through the company that we hired, and were inspected before people were allowed back into those cottages.
Yeah, I'm not speaking against those. What I'm speaking about is, everything that they did with that was all permitted, and it was inspected, and the guy was there was great, was-
The building department has come across some, some construction that's not permitted, plain and simple.
Yeah, and I'm not blaming that on Larry or anybody that's in this room. If somebody did it, they thought it was okay to do, and they did it, but no construction.
And the association is not aware of any of those situations. And so when that was drafted, it was shared with me in advance for comment, and I said, what's difficult for me with that statement is it's vague. It doesn't give me specific instances that I can, as a board member, try to verify, or try to validate, or try to understand. But we do our very best to reinforce with every owner what the requirements are, and that any bill- We had an owner, for instance, several years back, who wanted to put a bathroom upstairs, and we ceased and assisted him immediately, because you're not allowed to have a bathroom up there, it's for storage. So we had someone else who, we got word, wanted to turn a lot, an attic space into more than an attic space, and didn't get a permit, we shut them down right away. So when we have found anybody who's trying to skirt any of the town rules, we've shut them down immediately. But I don't know if someone does something at midnight that I'm not aware of, but we do our very best to be good citizens for the town of Westford, and to make sure that everything is done properly. And we want to make sure, from a practical standpoint, that the association cannot do bed checks. The master deed specifically states that these lofts are for storage only. And when you bought the loft from the developer, you signed a separate statement acknowledging that. On the other hand, they have carpet, they have cable, they have air conditioning. And so over time, there was a proliferation of people using those, not everyone who has a loft, but some. And the discussion that Henry and I have had is, from a practical standpoint, it's awfully difficult retroactively to do something other than ensure some safety measures that we all agree would make sense to do, and then to work the association to do that. Now, that's separate from whether or not the lofts are within or not within the 800 square feet. It's two separate issues that we have to talk about, and the association is here to commit to you that we want to do what's right for the town, we want to do what's right, because no one on this board wants to sit there and deal with a death, or even someone who was severely injured trying to escape from that.
Kid that falls off the loft and then is paralyzed.
Correct.
Just, normally World Series, fell out of a bunk and is paralyzed, off a bunk.
Yeah, thanks, Henry. So of the existing lofts that are there, do they all have the 5.7 window in the end of the building where the loft is?
I think most do. The developer, when the developer put the lofts in, as I understood it, he did them in accordance with the town's requirements at the time. So they're, like, I have one that's got, it's a very large window that will be easy to get out, if that's the case.
And my unit has the same. But also, Jim, adding to your comment, they also have put in there the tankless water heaters. So you have plumbers going up there, you know, we talked about maybe the potential of a fire or anything, but, so for storage purposes, yes, people would go up and bring stuff up there. Our concern is that, okay, if you're up there, and in the event that something happens, what can we put in place, you know, as a board, working with all of you here? But in my unit, there's a tankless water heater up beside, inside one of the walls there, but I have a full, well, I don't tell you what full size is, but my window is probably this wide, probably a good four and a half.
Where is the water heater?
Up in the loft.
There up in the lofts.
On the side wall.
Yeah.
And some units, the water heater's in other places, that's-
In most cases, they're upstairs.
And most of them there?
Yeah, most of them are upstairs. Because, you know, as you know, these are up above the ground.
Yep.
So it's really hard to find places for them. And since the developer was trying to squeeze as much livable space as he could, the best place was to put those up on the wall, inside the wall with a crawl space for the plumber to get in there every fall to close the cottages down, and every spring to open the cottages.
So my particular unit, okay, that we bought, has the loft, and also has an attic above it. I have pulled downstairs, so I can access the attic. So we have the window, we have ladder, we have fire extinguisher, there are already smoke detectors up there, and as Larry said, there's cable, carpeting, electricity, everything up there.
What kind of ladder do you have in your unit?
The ship ladder.
The ship ladder.
Yeah. Now, I know of one individual, maybe two, that have replaced the ship ladder with a spiral staircase, that I'm aware of, as opposed to the ship ladder.
Would that, was that required to have a building permit?
I don't know, I've just seen it.
Is that code, Henry?
It's spiral, it's just the same thing as the ship ladder, second egress.
See, in talking to Henry back and forth, his concern to me has been having a safe second egress. In the event you were up there storing, whatever, if you were bringing up there and you were doing legitimately what you're supposed to do, and there's a fire down below, and you couldn't get down the ladder, there's a safe egress, a second egress. And so what we've talked about as a board, and back and forth with Henry, is what would that look like so that none of us are closing our eyes to all those lofts that are there? Because none of us can do a bed check every night to see what someone's doing. But we can, if we agree on some safety measures, make sure that all those safety measures are put in. And because we close the cottages every fall and open them every spring, we can make sure, we can do an inspection every fall or every spring to make sure that they've continued to maintain that second ladder, et cetera, the fire extinguisher, whatever we might agree to. We want to make sure that the existing folks are safe, but we also think that those that, existing ones did not count towards the 800, and it just seems, as a board, unfair to punish those who didn't buy it through the developer, not be able to do it now. So we look at it as two issues. But the second issue is the safety issue, and we're being very candid with you, that we recognize that we need to do something, but we need to do it collectively, we need to do it together, we need to be working together to ensure that safety.
Any questions from the board? Thomas?
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, of the, how many cottages are there?
276, I think.
276, and how many have lofts that were put in by Dave Guthrie?
I'm going to guess over half, because we did the last two streets he finished, 95% of those cottages bought the lofts.
So roughly 138?
And those all have the windows in them?
They have the windows, and they have the ship ladder. But no secondary exit is, you would jump out the window.
And is the ladder by the-
No, that's what Henry is suggesting, that we collectively agree to impose upon folks that they have the secondary ladder.
You know, of the, so there's 276 total, 138 have lofts, you know how many lofts have been put in, in addition to what the builder may have done?
I'm guessing less than a half a dozen, two or three or four? There's not been very many?
Oh, sorry.
It's not a very big number?
Yeah, because, and again, I'm, memory is a funny thing.
It is.
You'll lose it in time. And I remember when we discussed this project, we really focused on the 800 square feet, and on the fact that people could have lofts, that was an option.
Right.
But that was never, is, to my recollection, ever included in the total size of the unit.
That's our understanding as well, sir. That's correct.
And I believe that's correct, and we could, there are better minds than me, and some of these, a few of these people are still around, we could ask why you were there, so.
You could also look at the last 20, 30, 40 cottages that got occupancy permits, and you'd see what those square footage is, and you'd see that the loft wasn't included. I mean, I think that's an issue that we believe, and that's why we approved this request, is because they were not included there. But that's a whole separate issue that Henry brought up after the fact on the safety issue. And so we've had extensive discussions with Henry about, not the 800, that's your decision, not his decision, but how do we collectively come up with an idea to make these safer, the existing ones? And we're certainly, as a board, open to do that. We want to do it for the community, and we'd like to work with the town to come up with a solution that we can all live with.
Did, Henry, on the issue of the code for loft, access to the loft, you said the ship ladder is not per code?
For storage it is.
For storage it is.
For a person up there, no.
Storage only.
So it's, the idea for all these lofts was that that ship ladder was there for storage only. Yet it's carpeted, and there's cable up there.
And air conditioning.
And air conditioning. If you use it for storage, I mean, it almost insinuates that it's also extra space for sleeping.
Right.
So it seems like, you know, the process of adding this many units, 100 units with lofts, has created that nightmare, where it's just ideal for a bedroom, or for sleeping, and not for storage, because it's, for storage, you're unfinished, and there was no-
It's all finished.
Light bulb hanging from the ceiling, and a rough floor, and say, yeah, people put their stuff up.
Drywalled, painted, it's all finished.
Drywall, painted, finished, carpeting, cable, somebody could have a little computer up there, use it as a part-time office.
Some do.
I mean, we've kind of-
During that storm, when we did the inspections, and there was some, I mean, some lofts that were really finished, very nice, did a nice job with them.
So it's obviously not for storage.
That's why you charge $20,000, because that was a lot of money, just for a storage unit.
Yeah, I, my only concern with this is, like Larry said, that the units that are existing are a struggle for us, because some of them could be 10, past 10 years, where I don't really have any leverage to do anything, other than making sure that people are aware that they're not safe. Anything moving forward, I want to be sure that, if somebody comes in with a loft, and you approve the square footage, we want to be sure they're going to put a set of stairs in there, because I'm going to look at the loft, if somebody's going to use that as a bedroom.
Yeah, yeah.
Automatically, it's just going to be an automatic thing for me when they come in.
Yeah.
That's all I would be looking for on my end of it.
So any future lofts, if it would have-
I'd be looking at stairs, yeah.
Stair?
Stairs to get up there, yeah, yeah.
Stairs that are approved to code?
Exactly.
No, no ship ladders?
No ship ladders. Unless they can use them for storage, and even a letter stating that they're not going to use it for, it's going to be strictly for storage? Sometimes that doesn't work. But I would never call that out on anybody, it's just, it's a letter, and sometimes when they give it to you, you got to run with it, and-
Yeah, I understand.
And the other problem that we have today is, when someone buys a resale, they don't read the master deed. They get a document that says, in most real estate transactions, you've received the master deed, you've read the master deed, you have no problems with the master deed. No one's reading 150-page master deed of a condominium. It's just a reality. And so when someone bought a resale, had a loft, it had beds up there, they didn't know the difference. They didn't buy it from the builder, so they didn't have that conversation. And so it's become complicated over time, and we're not trying to cover anything up, we're not trying to minimize anything, we're trying to be as transparent with you as possible, so that we can collectively do the right thing retroactively and prospectively, so that there's safety for all that have a loft upstairs. And we'd like to make sure that it's not discriminatory, so that someone who bought from the developer can have it, someone who didn't buy it can't have it. But we certainly understand that there might be certain requirements going forward that need to be met. But we're not trying to say to you, just because X number of them are past the 10 years, we're doing nothing about it. It's been brought to our attention, and we'd like to work with you.
I thought when the unit sold, doesn't the condo association have to sign off on that transaction? There's some type of document that-
The only thing is that their cottage fees are paid to date, before they can take ownership. If the previous, if the seller has delinquent cottage fees, they have to be paid before the transaction closes. So the management company that represents us and does all the accounting is the one who has to sign a 6D, it's called a 6D, to verify that there are no outstanding liabilities for that particular seller.
So it would appear that we have two issues here. One, people who want to add a loft.
Correct.
And two, how do we get the people who have lofts to make them safe?
Correct.
And there's a whole lot of papers that have to be changed as a result of it. You know, all those deed documents that state all this stuff, and, so, you know, we as a board can say, okay, anybody who wants to add a loft has to come in front of this board and get a, you know, a special permit, or a period, or whatever we determine to be. As far as the existing properties, you know, maybe if there's a loft, that's okay, if there's a window in the loft, it's a proper size, that's great, and then maybe the association can say, you need to have a fire ladder inside that window, that can be thrown out the window, you know, they come in a can, thrown out the window, and now you have a way to get out of there. But it still can't be used as a bedroom. You know, we're saying, yes, this is what you can do, but no, you can't use it for a residence.
No, it's a catch-22.
So, I mean, that's essentially what we're looking for, right?
Yeah, that's crazy, yeah.
And the part that's difficult is, we're not doing bed checks, you're not doing bed checks, so we want to make sure that there's safety, and we're prepared as a board to do the right thing retroactively. And, you know, we weren't quite sure what that would be, but in talking back and forth to Henry, it was making sure that the right size of the window, they've got the ladder escape, as you talked about, having a fire extinguisher, et cetera. There are smoke detectors there, et cetera, so that everybody has two egresses, and then reminding everybody of the master deed that states that it is for storage only. But I can't, I can't give you a guarantee that someone isn't going to, two days later, two weeks later, have someone sleep up there at night, and I can't take the responsibility for checking that. But we can take the responsibility of making sure that the safety features there, and we can do an inspection once a year, when we either open or close the cottages, to make sure that those are in place.
We're saying that, but it almost sounds like we're saying that it should, then it can be used as a living space.
Yes, exactly.
That's the challenge there.
By definition, they can't be, and by our master deed, they can't be. But how do I enforce, or how do you enforce, unless we check every night that there's no one sleeping up there?
Yeah, you're not going to do that.
No, I know. It's...
The easy thing is, I don't know if we could do it. Henry, could, is it conceivable that all those cottages that have those ship ladders do not make code? I mean, if it's, it's storage, but it's livable space? I mean, if somebody came in for a permit now to pull a loft in, you would require them to put in?
A set of stairs.
A set of stairs.
Put in stairs.
So then, we're kind of saying that by putting in a set of stairs, it's living space.
Right.
The others that have no set of stairs are all living space with huge safety issues.
How does that affect the interior of the inside if you put a stair there, then? I mean, that's got to really...
It's impractical.
Right?
It's impractical.
It's impossible, right?
He used the ship ladder. It's because you can push it up against the wall, or you can lift it out to get up and down.
So you're not ever going to come to code, right, with a stair there?
So if we, if we require, if this board says, okay, if someone's putting in a loft, one of the requirements or the conditions is that there has to be a set of stairs that's to code, then they probably won't do a loft. Because it's going to take up so much space, and it's going to be...
They'll say it's just for storage and go back to square one again.
They're going to go back to square one. They will go back to square one.
We can't condition all future lofts have to have stairs?
We, well...
No.
My question is, this is before my time. What was the thought process with the words "no additions" or "bump outs"? An addition is a loft.
Well, originally, when we approved this, because there were so many units, we didn't want people come back and have additions and stuff like that. It was, like any condo association, it's very rare that you can add on to your building, right? I mean, that...
What you buy is what you get.
Right. Yes.
So to give you an example, we had a, one of the original owners had a 675-square-foot cottage. He came before the town to put a half-bath in, just like the developers doing the new ones. Someone on one of the boards said, no, go buy a new cottage if you don't like it, all right? That's your alternative. It resulted in him suing the town and going back and forth, and the town reaching an agreement at that point, that they would allow up to the 800 square foot and allow, because originally, the bump outs came in, then the developer put them out, people said, well, then I'd like to do the same thing. And there was the discussion, we'll go buy another cottage, but that didn't seem fair and reasonable. So the collective decision was to allow the older ones the same flexibility as the later ones, but not to exceed 800 square feet. And to do it in such a way so that people aren't coming back to the town on a regular basis, asking for exceptions, to have a process that the town's building inspector could follow. And so that's what we're trying to do tonight as well, is to make sure that people aren't coming back to you, that the building inspector clearly understands the rules, and then he or she, depending on who the future building inspector, he can follow those rules without having people come before boards and committees on a regular basis. And so that's where it comes into now. Is adding a bump out or adding a half-bath okay or not? In the past, that's been approved, and said, figure out a way to stop coming before us and keep it within the 800 square feet. But then, when this loft issue came up, and Henry looked at how many square footage that cottage is plus the loft, he said, that'll make it over 800. And I can't tell by the language whether or not it's allowed or not, which is what drove the question here, to provide clarity to you as to, is that in or not? Because the others, it wasn't. But then it opened up a whole new can of worms, because Henry was very candid to us and said, I look at the real estate listings at Summer Village, and I see a lot of the used cottages with lofts having beds in there, and I see them advertised in such a way that I believe people are living up there, or not living, sleeping up there. And I said to him that I know that to be a fact. I'm not disputing that. But I can't do a bed check every night. He said, neither can I. So that's why we started talking about the second effort. What do we do collectively going forward? But hopefully, we can get the loft issue resolved, so that then any new loft meets the same requirements as the old loft, so that they're treated equally, and that every loft, whether it's a newer and older one, has a second egress of safety, so that if someone were up there, they can get out safely.
Are you saying, though, so the units that don't have a loft today, they potentially could build a loft in there now?
Some of them could request a loft down the road. That's correct.
They have to change their roof line or anything?
In some cases, in most cases, no, because of the way they were designed. I mean, no one's going, you can't change the exterior, so we're not going to let them change the roof line or anything else. It's got to fit within the footprint of the cottage. The difference with the bump outs is the original cottages, the closets came into the bedroom, and then a few years afterwards, they figured out, if we move the cottages as a bump out, you add six or eight square feet to the bedroom. And so, and that's where some people have asked for the bump outs. So it does change their exterior, but it makes it look like the cottages that were built in the last five or seven years. And the same with the half-bath. It doesn't change the exterior look of that cottage versus a newer cottage that was built, let's say, five years ago, kind of a thing. So we've tried to keep the integrity of the cottage itself, so they look the same, whether they were built 15 years ago or five years ago.
I guess technically, Henry, if they wanted to build a loft, and they had the ability to do that, they could build a loft, right? Because it's not considered living space.
That's the question.
Right? I mean, technically, today, you could build that loft if you wanted to, because we're not, we're considering it storage.
If it's over 800 square, if it makes the total over 800 square feet, Henry's asking you to tell them, does that loft, is it part of the 800 or not part of the 800? Because it hasn't been to date.
Well, the intent was not to make it.
Correct. And so, and I've explained that to Henry, and he said, Larry, don't disagree, but I've got a piece of paper from this board here that says not to exceed 800 square feet. And it doesn't say parentheses excluding lofts. So that's why rightfully, he's coming, trying to get some direction from you on that issue. And this, it opened the second issue, which we're trying to resolve collectively and positively and as quickly as we can as well.
So Joe, has town council weighed in on this at all?
Not to my knowledge, and I don't think we've had anything from town council, no.
I might be able to offer a definition of a loft.
It's feasible.
I'll say he might be able to, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't know. Yeah, it's a tough one, huh?
It's something we could certainly do. We could reach out to town council if that's the board's wish, if you'd like us to reach out to town council.
Well, first of all, I think, for Henry's sake, we need to get a definite description in what the 800 should comprise of. And then, based on that information, we can say, yes, you can add a loft, no, you can't add a loft, it's going to be for storage only, you got to have the 5.7 window, if it's, it's going to be for storage, so you have to put in a ladder. And you got to put the ladder that you can throw out the window if you get stuck up there. No questions asked, that has to be done. And now you're saying, okay, great, you can put people up there and let them sleep there, because that's what they're going to do, but that's not the intention of what we want to do.
I know. Right?
We want to make, make it so that nobody's sleeping up there.
Right.
That's the idea, but it's also an impossibility.
Well, and you want to make it safe. Say, somebody dies, I mean, that's the whole thing.
How many units would you have to redo the windows, I guess? Do you know that?
How many units?
How many window, how many units would you have to change the windows out to?
I don't know that we'd have to change any of the windows out.
Oh, you don't think you'll have to change, on the existing?
On all the ones the developer did, that I'm aware of, the windows are really good size. And I'm sure Dave Guthrie, when he decided to put the lofts in, made sure that, because he had to get inspected, he had to get occupancy permits, et cetera. So I'm sure that, from that standpoint, that he did that the way he should. But again, the difficult part from an owner's standpoint is, it came with carpet, it came with cable, it came with everything, and yes, they don't remember that it says there that it's 800 square foot of living area, and that's non-livable area, and then they started using it. So that's the conundrum we all have. I don't think that there was ill will on anyone's part to begin with, but things change over time, and when people paid $20,000 for the loft, it became, you know, during COVID, I know some people were working up there as office space.
Sure.
Because they had separate air conditioning and stuff, so...
But I guess, maybe I'm confused. I thought you were saying you needed to change some of the windows, but now you're saying the windows are okay for all lofts that you have.
I'm saying the windows are okay.
So then you would just have to require them to put the fire ladder in.
The follow ladder, that's correct. And on any new ones, that the window, Henry has made clear what size the window has to be. Henry, and the ones that you re-inspected after the storm that had lofts, did you have any problems with the size of the windows there, do you know?
Some of the ones I've seen, no. I didn't see any problems with them.
Okay. I can't tell you the exact size that the developer put in, but I know in, my family has two different models, and in both models, the windows are plenty big for me to climb out, if I had to climb out in the event of emergency.
It appears to me that the windows throughout the whole association, they are pretty much consistently the same size. I would think that the developer had just, this was the model, these were the sized windows, et cetera. So if we can come to an agreement tonight, we're, number one, we're looking for something so we can be safe. That if I go up to my tankless water heater up there, you know, and God forbid, something happens below, and the smoke detector goes off, I've got that ladder that I throw out the window that goes out, and the smoke detector, fire extinguishers there, but if I need to get out, I need to go. In my particular cottage, I have a shed, a bump out shed right below, that was all part of the build. So in my particular case, I'm dropping down five feet with a ladder. But my ladder is probably a good 20-foot ladder to get out, and I can, I can get out that window. So my observations of the whole complex is that the windows are pretty consistent throughout it.
And there's one model that we've said in the past, we would not approve as a board, a loft, because it has like a porthole or a very small window. And we said that putting a different window in there would change the look and feel of all the others. So not every model is conducive to a loft. Most are.
Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this issue?
Yeah.
Come up to the microphone and give us your name.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Markle. And we were the, I think we started this, this issue, because we were the applicants for the loft back in April or late March, that we put in a request in for an a loft that would exceed 800 square feet, which was denied because of the square footage initially. So we went back and redrew the architectural plans, and our intention for a loft is storage place, but we pulled in the walls to reduce it to 798 square feet, and it was then denied again, with the presumption that we were going to use it for livable space. That request that we made was using the same builder, the same architectural plan on another loft of the same exact unit that was signed by Henry two years prior for Nine Ravine Way. So in our opinion, we were like, we're working with a preferred contractor for the community, we're working within the guides of a permit that has already been granted within the last three years, and, and, you know, with the same architectural plan and the same unit. So like, in our opinion, we were kind of free and clear. We ordered that ship ladder, the same one that every other unit with a loft has. It's a $3,200 ladder that shipped from California. Like, I would have loved to build a staircase if I had that option and I had that space. But our intention for that loft was storage space. But now we're in the situation where I think it's unraveled an entire, you know, can of worms that we're stuck in the middle of, because we would like that space, and we will do whatever it takes in terms of whatever you're comfortable with. We are using it for storage, but if you want different accommodations made in the event that you're fearful that we won't, we will make those and sign them and notarize them and do all the things.
I just want to clarify that the ship ladder is attached at the top of the loft, so the floor of the loft, and it pulls off the wall. It's not like a fixed ladder against a wall. It's pulled off the wall to be able to use it.
It has two foot rails, like handrails that come over it. So the ladder is 10 feet, and then it has two foot handrails that come up and over. The only other thing that we were talking about is like, as it relates to the building code, the ceiling height is less than seven feet in those loft spaces. So I don't know, I think Massachusetts Building Code says that ceiling height needs to be at least seven feet of livable square.
Well, the international code, it's kind of, depends on what level you're on. It's less in the basement than it is on like a loft area.
Okay.
As far as the stairs go, I mean, you have to have a certain rise and run, certain handrail heights, and the whole litany of things, that doesn't even come close to allowing the ship ladders to meet the code.
Sure. Yeah. And then, and yet, like, you know, we'll, again, we'll do what you tell us to do, but our intention is not, we have three little girls. So like, our intention is to not put our kids up...
I appreciate our concern about the safety.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
We just want to be able to do what the other cottages have. We picked this cottage for its location. We didn't think a loft would be a problem, since a lot of the other cottages have them.
And we don't want that inequity at resale time either, of other, this privilege being granted to other owners and not to us, because it does affect our opportunity for resale as well, not having a storage space.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience have a comment?
Did they actually come before the ZVA for that request?
No, not always tonight, before, cut here.
So we're representing, the association is representing the implications of it.
I got you, okay.
We've tried to isolate them, so that, as she mentioned, a can of worms, we don't want people picking on them as the opener of the can of worms. And so the association has taken the lead to have this discussion with you tonight.
Hi, welcome.
Please come to the microphone and tell us your name and where you live.
I'm Sandy Terrace. I live in 23 Lazy Day. I bought a brand new beautiful unit in the fall of 2016, and I'm a grandmother of six. And I do not remember ever hearing the loft was not supposed to be used for sleeping space. I was never told of a fire hazard. I have two double beds up there. It is also used for storage, and obviously, I want my grandkids to be safe. So there were a couple of things the builder really didn't mention. They didn't mention my circle was not going to be paved. They never said the loft was used for storage only. So I think the builder was very focused on selling. I love my cottage, but I just want to give you my perspective.
You were the original owner, you bought that new?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The storage part was in the 100 page document, right?
Well, you own a condo doc, don't you?
It's in the master deed right there, section 7.
Yeah, so everybody gets that when they buy it.
Everybody, before they buy, they get that.
Yes, but I don't agree with the fine chief.
Well, I'm just...
Exactly.
Yep.
So as far as I'm concerned, we're not going to walk away tonight with a resolution to this, because I think this board is kind of shaking their head, saying, you know, what's the right thing to do? We want to get more input from our building commissioner, because it's very valuable to us. I think town council, we might as well send him some of this and see what he determines is right, wrong, or different. And based on the information we gather, we'll have you guys back again, maybe have another discussion as to what we think we would like to do, and see if it fits into what you'd like to do as a board over there.
Yeah, Jeff had mentioned that he thought this would be a dialogue tonight, and then you would seek additional input from the staff.
Yep. Yep.
And we'd come back at your next meeting and have a second discussion, hopefully at that point coming to a conclusion that he did not anticipate it tonight because of the nature of the issues, but that he hoped we could have a robust discussion and a transparent discussion. And then they, staff will work collectively with you, and then we'll come back here next month.
Right. Because you got a few issues here. It's not just one, you get two or three different things. I think an interpretation of that clause in red is needed, a legal interpretation, and some other things. So I think that's the course of action.
Can I ask just one quick question? So, I know I asked this question already, but, so each one of the lofts has a window in it now, right?
I believe each one does, yes.
Okay. So why doesn't the condo association require the fire ladder now, if it's a safety issue?
We've been discussing that as a board, and been discussing it with our own council as to whether we could mandate that or not. The board is open to doing that, but we wanted to get your input. What we didn't want to do was try to mandate something, then that's not good enough, you and you wanted something else. So we didn't want to have to do it in two steps. So we really wanted to come out of here, recognizing there's a risk of 30 or 60 days, but coming out of here collectively allied with what has to be done, and then the board taking its.
Okay, all right. But I just didn't want you to think that, I mean, you guys have a situation where you can move forward from a safety perspective without this board, right?
That's correct.
That's, you know.
We don't want to do something and then have you say that's not the right answer and do something else.
All right.
What authority do you have, enforcement authority, the association have, generally? I mean, if these lofts are being used for bedrooms, and you know it, and you go to a unit and you can see it, and for whatever reason, there's two double beds in that unit, that is not permitted. Now, is there anything the association can do to address that? You send a letter saying you're mandated to take that, those beds down, they cannot be up there?
So you can store beds up there, all right? So it's for storage, so someone's storing.
Technically, in case.
A can of worms is.
I understand. I'm just trying, I got 276 owners.
No more lofts. No more, no more lofts.
That's just crazy.
I understand, but, understand from those 100.
The association seems to be just wiggling in this whole thing, instead of getting a little more strong now.
I think we do believe.
You're waffling, you're waffling.
Yeah, we do believe that we have the authority to issue these criteria for these lofts, but we wanted to come before.
For example, this woman never saw that in her deed. As the association, take that section of the deed and send it to every member by registered letter, saying, this is your, this is, maybe they didn't know this, but you should have known it, and we're telling you now, this is the rule of law and this association.
And we've had.
That's one move you could do, that sounds like.
We've had public meetings and we've.
It's easier to be told I can't use it for what I bought it for, it's not.
Technically, you were told the day you bought it, because it's in the paperwork.
It's in the paperwork.
My husband doesn't have a recollection either.
But it's in the paperwork. I can tell you that in the five cottages my family bought, we had to sign a separate piece of paper that acknowledged that, and it acknowledged the fact that section 7.8 of the deeds, of the mast of deed said that. So lots of people didn't remember it, and lots of people didn't read it. It's not, I can't judge what happened or didn't happen. I don't have good, Dave's record, so I can't prove they signed it or didn't sign it. I don't have any of that.
No, but that's in the past. Right now, you have an opportunity, we're sitting here, to do something constructive, forceful, positive, initiative. You, your association can do something. We're sitting here with this quandary and saying, well, people are using lofts, they didn't look at it in the deed. We're hearing all kinds of excuses as to why this thing slipped outside the lines. Yet, I don't see any move by the association, hear any move by the association, you're suggesting anything you can do to bring this back within the lines, at least to some point.
So we have.
A little more forceful on this whole using lofts as sleeping area. We're talking about a safety issue, throw a ladder out there. Well, it's better to have it not used as a bedroom than to throw a ladder out there. And if you can do something to mandate these docks as.
We've had several public meetings reinforcing this information, but we cannot do bed checks at night. We have told owners over and over now, since this has come up, of section 7.8, and many people say, I don't remember it, I haven't read it. We've discussed it, and we've prepared as a board to take it one step further by collectively coming up with some steps with, in partnership with you, to implement those and to require those, even if the association had to mandate or do whatever it had to do to ensure that. But short of having the discussion and having the conversation and reminding people that it's not livable space, it's storage only, but also understanding we can't do night bedly, night checks.
You said that, you said that.
We want to try to do the right thing. But we want it, we want to do it in collaboration with you as a town. I think immediately, you guys should say, there's got to be a throw-out ladder, there's got to be a charged fire extinguisher. I mean, you don't need our permission to do that. You don't want a fire to happen next weekend and not have that there. So like Jim said, you guys can take a step forward yourselves, and I'd get right on those two or three items that we've clearly came up with. Are we going to add to those? Possibly. But those three are clear what needs to be done.
I think that's why we're here tonight, looking for your input on those issues, because clearly, we do have the authority to move forward with those safety issues. And we've had just recent discussions about that, among the board, as to what are the particular items that we will require, okay? Regardless, we're talking about sleeping there, or storage up there, or whatever, but yes. So that's why, part of the reason we're here with you too, because yes, we can move forward with that, and we will as a board.
I'd like to hear you do everything you have within your authority, and tell us if there's three things you can do, or 10 things you can do. But give us a manual, what authority you have. Can you go in somebody's unit? Can you inspect them? You said you inspect them in the spring and the fall. Can you send somebody a notice saying, this looks like it's been used for living space for the whole season? Season to assist. I don't know if you can do that, but whatever's within your authority, I'd like to hear what you guys can do, rather than leaving up to this board to be the.
We will have a report to you for the next meeting.
So you guys haven't got much longer out there, right? When are you closing?
October 15th.
October 15th?
Correct.
Okay. So our next meeting is the middle of September.
Correct.
The meeting after that would be the middle of October, so.
Season's over then.
The season's over. I think we're, let's do this the best way we can. Not if we're going to be good ways, because of the alternatives that people are coming up with.
Scott, before next meeting, could we ask Henry to sort of just outline his, the criteria would be to legally build or add a loft space to a summer cottage?
Did you hear that, Eric? Thank you.
You know what, there's, I heard him talk about three or four, just from a code point of view, so if we, if the town was to allow additions, this is, that, this is the criteria.
I would be happy to do that. The question I have is letter M up there. This is the cottages will have a maximum of two bedrooms. If that loft becomes a third bedroom, is there anything that I need to be worrying about as a zoning issue?
About the board of health.
Yeah, board of health.
Okay. So I just, I'm just looking at this, and I'm trying to make sure that I got everything out front with everybody here. So if we are making a third bedroom, it says it clearly right there, maximum of two.
Right.
Well, that's, that's an interesting point, because doesn't that affect the wastewater treatment plant there?
I don't know.
One of that questions you've asked. You already asked our professionals to submit a letter to you stating that it would not have an impact, because if you had two children, whether they sleep in the downstairs or they sleep upstairs, it shouldn't impact it. But we'll have a letter to you before next meeting.
It does when the two kids bring their two friends, and there's two down and there's two up. Now, there's four kids instead of two.
Our wastewater treatment system works at 50% capacity.
That's a nightmare. I'm just thinking about it, you know? When I was still on the job responding down from Boston Road to a fire on Lazy Day Circle, the last thing I'm going to be thinking about is having six grandkids up in a loft someplace that I don't even know is in the building.
And I'll have six of them.
I'm just using that as a number, ma'am. You know, so there's a huge safety issue right there, in my mind.
We have an annual meeting coming up this Saturday. We'll make sure this is on the agenda. We talked to everybody about that, and the board will take some action to demonstrate to you. We wanted you to know that we take it this seriously. We're trying to be transparent, trying to work with you. We're not trying to play games, we're not trying to be cute, and we will report back to you after the annual meeting.
The end of the meeting is what, of how many people, 170 cottages, how many?
Sometimes we have 100, 150 people show up.
So I mean, I would rather see, in addition to that, as a follow-up, some directive or letter to every single person saying, this discussion is taking place, town is aware that there's a safety issue, that you're violating, the numerous occupants, residents are violating the law, it's a serious code issue. A firm letter, almost a threatening letter. If you don't comply, the association's going to have to, the town, the building inspector, board of health, concerned. And I think you need to ramp this up, ramp your message up, because it's kind of gotten kind of back and forth, been going on for a long time, and it's continuing.
So do they, do they allow work to be done after October 15th in the units?
There can be, yes. We can authorize that.
Scott, may I ask one extra question?
Sure.
Because I feel the fact that I might get lashed without, because we started all of this, so maybe I'll be selling sooner or later. But can you help, can you help me understand? So I filed my building permit with my contractor that we paid a very high deposit to. We go to window school, we bought that $3,200 ladder and had it custom-made and shipped. So my permit has been sitting since April in unapproved status. And I just, you know, whatever the path is, is fine, but I'd like to understand, like, for, like, what it would take to get my permit approved, and whether or not I should, I'm talking about doing it this season or next season, or whether I need to get refunded from that contractor for some of this. I just, I'm trying to, and I know this is a selfish request, but I'm just trying to understand, like, for me personally, who submitted this permit, like, the last week of March, that's been sitting kind of all season, waiting for some sort of clarification on whether or not it can move forward, like, what do you feel like is the best path forward?
Well, I think unfortunately, my answer's not going to make you happy. I think you're going to have to sit tight.
Okay.
Only because, you know, we're going to get legal opinion as to wording in the document. We have to have another meeting with these guys to determine, you know, are lofts going to be allowed to be built? Henry has his criterion to make them safe for the building code. There's a whole, you get like 12 things that are going to go into this. So, you know, get a refund. I don't know what to tell you. You know, it doesn't, it's not going to happen this season, would be my guess.
Okay. That's actually really helpful. I just, I just want to be able to be transparent with him.
Yeah, because I just don't think it's going to, I know it's not going to happen this season, you know? Because there's still a long way to go here. We have to decide if morally, we're doing the right thing by putting windows in and putting ladders up there and everything else, kind of encouraging people to use it as living space. But on the other hand, we don't want it not to be safe if people go up there. We got, even if it's not a living space, but to your point, if the plumber goes up there and the boiler catches on fire, he's going to be able to get out too. So I mean, it's a slippery slope that we're dealing with here.
Or if you're going up to your storage area to get something.
Yeah, no, I mean, it could be, yeah, it could be a homeowner too. I mean, it could be anybody.
So there's no.
And that's probably not, you know, the big concern, I think, if you go to the storage area, you get something and the fire breaks out, you can probably come down the ladder before you're in a dangerous situation. But if it's at 2:00 AM and there's kids sleeping up there, that's a vastly, vastly different.
Up in there with the way up.
Somebody, at least, you know, the fire starts downstairs and the smoke's all going up to the loft. I mean, middle of the night, people might not be as aware they are as if someone's up there in the storage area grabbing something around the middle of the day.
You hear everything in the cottage is, you know, in my heart of hearts, I'm not really concerned, because I hear everything. And God forbid there's a fire, I would tell the child, it's only one or two at a time, to jump. I would catch it.
Yeah, yeah, it's not that much of a jump, yeah.
Exactly. I'm not really concerned, and obviously, I don't have someone up there every single night, it's only about three or four, five times a season. You know, it's a big thrill to go sleep in my grandpa's cottage.
So we have our homework.
Yes, and we do too.
And you have yours. The next meeting, Joe, is?
September 21st.
September 21st. We'll continue this discussion until September 21st. Can I have that motion, please?
Hold on a second.
Jim made the motion. Jay, second it. All those in favor?
Hi.
Do you have any other questions of us that, did we?
I just would like to remind you that the half-bath or the bump-outs, when we resolve this 800 square feet, so that people are, keep coming back and forth with you, so that it's defined in such a way that then Henry knows, he can approve those without having to have public meetings with you. I just didn't want to lose sight of that piece while we're also talking about the lofts.
Yeah.
Kind of wrap it all in together, and make it easy for the town to administer if someone wants to add a half-bath or a bump-out, and they're within the 800 square feet. How many models are there over there? Six or seven, I think, maybe eight, total. He added models as he went along. Some models didn't sell, they added new models afterwards.
You know, Scott, relative to their request, you might want to consider splitting it off, because I think the 800 square foot bump-out is settled, and the loft is another issue.
Yeah.
So if we could partition it, I would suspect next month, we could say yes.
So you don't have to come back individually.
No, not for the loft.
You're talking about a bump-out or a half-bath?
I think, we've addressed that.
But we haven't addressed the process, so Henry needs to have a process that he can say, I'm following the rules.
Yeah.
And it's a little unclear right now, so.
He has a process. He says, come see that zoning board of appeals. That's his process.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for coming, you guys.
Good night.
Good night, good night.
We should save all these materials for next month.
Yep.
Yes, please do, because.
That's a lot of material.
Package, and we don't want to have to.
You're going over Sierra's budget on paper here.
It's true. We may.
Going to ask for the binding class back pretty soon.
So, you know, I don't want us to print on top of it.
Motion.
All right, wait, you got one more here. Here, boy.
Okay.
Thanks, Henry.
Thanks, Henry.
Thanks, Henry.
So the, the next item is the potential changes to the accessory dwelling unit. I'm assuming everybody has read these over. It looks like the red was the second pass-through, the green was the third pass-through.
So actually, the green is the suggested changes from the planning board.
Oh, we'll cross over right now.
Yeah, so, but that was at the August first.
That was at the August 1st meeting. So the last time this board reviewed it, for your suggestion, we presented those to the planning board. So they went ahead and offered some additional tweaks, based on your input and the reasoning behind it. So they, under the, under section 3.3.3, number one, they saw, they still, they still felt like there could be an instance where a mortgage inspection plan could be acceptable.
You can leave that, not to interrupt, you could leave that in there, but Henry wants everything stamped. He, any of the permits, like I have filed and other contracts have filed, where a mortgage inspection plan was inadequate, he really wanted, you know, by, you know, stamped by a professional, so.
With, with no exterior work whatsoever?
Well, like a pool that's in the middle of a.
Okay, yeah, so that would need a plot plan, because he has to check the setbacks. But if you're not actually doing like exterior work, I think is what the.
Yeah, the planning board was thinking was, if there was absolutely no exterior work, no changes to the parking lot, no other exterior changes whatsoever, mortgage inspection plan couldn't work. Otherwise, if you're, you know, adding a new curb cut, expanding the driveway, whatever, then a certified plot plan could make sense. So just really in that limited scope of, if there's absolutely no changes to anything mortgage, other than the interior of the structure, they could see a mortgage inspection plan work. So they kind of wanted to leave that a little bit of window in there.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what you see.
The only concern I had with that is, like, go down to my neighborhood, houses are built in 60s, front yard setback was 35 feet. Now, residentially, it's 50 feet. So pretty much everything you go to do is going to require a visit to this board. If you don't have, a mortgage survey plan may not show that. You know, it's a, it's a, it's a good guess at the, at the distances, but I think that's, it's probably something that's going to be a staff decision. Is that, am I thinking right?
I mean, if you guys would be comfortable with that, we can certainly try to, you know, weigh those options if we see that a property, the structure's been around for a long time, and we see that, you know, on the mortgage inspection plan, that maybe it's kind of close to the setbacks, we're not really sure, you know, we, we would probably ask for a further verification.[1637.41] verification.
Okay, so that's, that was my only comment on that. But yeah, I get that.
Yeah, otherwise something, yeah. I just wanted to leave the option for something that's painfully obvious that there's no changes, no other issues out there, the mortgage inspection plan could be acceptable. And we can use some discretion on that. So moving on to 3.3.3, number three, they were concerned about stepping on, I guess, jurisdictional issues of getting into the Board of Health's business. So they wanted to leave it to strongly advised to seek Board of Health review as opposed to having them approved by the Board of Health because if they go to the Board, if they go to the Board of Health and see they're going to have a number of issues, then maybe they're not going to pursue it at all. So they wanted to leave it as, you know, don't require a Board of Health approval if they go ahead and they talk to them and realize they're not going to do it, they're going to have issues with SEPTIC. But they said, maybe leave it as strongly advised and maybe even put something on the application that says you must contact the Board of Health prior to submitting this application. So put it all in front that, yes, you need to go to Board of Health and if they find issues with SEPTIC and you're not going to be able to do this ADU because you have to make changes and your lot doesn't allow for it, then maybe it nips the application in the bud in any...
Right, because I mean, we don't, we need to, we don't need to do this more times than we have to.
Yeah.
Because if they come to us and we give them the approval and the Board of Health, there's no way.
Right.
We just wasted all of our time. We ain't getting any younger.
So they loosened that slightly to be strongly advised versus required to get Board of Health approval. So that was that. And then lastly, we just wanted to confirm 3.3.4, number three, you wanted to remove that section on appearance.
Parking, what is, where is it? Just above parking. The green that's all crossed out was, you had suggested removing that language, which is mostly the existing language that's in there. The only thing we had added was including accessory structures such as barns, garages, and sheds, just to make it more clear that, you know, it's not just talking about dwellings. And this is fairly standard language in most ADU bylaws, but I think the feeling of the board last time was that it wasn't necessary or you didn't want it to be repeated here or, you know, I don't recall exactly how the conversation went. So we're just showing that deleted, but I think, did the planning board have a comment on this one? I missed that meeting.
They didn't have a comment on it really, then, you know, we wanted to confirm that you wanted that removed. And then if it's removed, then, you know, parking becomes number three as opposed to number four. So then just rejigger some numbering on there.
Yeah, I mean, we don't need to get, it's a design factor of an ADU, I mean, that's